Good evening. It's five thirty PM on Wednesday, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at one, one, two, three, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule, Councillors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Sensibility, as the Presiding Officer, I have to identify the law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant at Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we are pleased to have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of quick announcements before we get started. First is noted on the agenda, the public hearing on the DeHare Number One Turbine subdivision that had been scheduled for this evening meeting. Meeting has been canceled. Also, if you wish to speak during this evening's public hearing or other opportunities for public comment, please complete a sign up form located on the table by the door and hand it to the chief or other staff in the back of the room. Please include your name on the form and circle the item that you wish to speak to. Moving on to announcements from the mayor and council members. Just mentioning, next week I will be meeting with Governor Little and some other mayors in the area to discuss the situation of the Albion Falls dam and repairs. I will provide a brief with you or to you after that at our next meeting. Ultimately, with Senator Rich last week, a week and a half ago here at City Hall, and we discussed that and you know, I provided our concerns and comments to him. So hopefully that situation will be remedied. It sounds like there is at least a plan in place and they're looking at improving one of the spillways or shoring it up some so it'll be a little more functional. Beyond that, I'm just back from dropping a son off at college, a freshman. I know Council President Rule and Councilman Howard also did the same. So if you travel the country, it's always nice to come home because Sandpoint's pretty amazing. Council members have any comments or announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
This Sunday, my wife and I will be putting on a youth triathlon for young kids. So if you guys are bored this coming up Sunday, we would love to have you downtown City Beach to right in front of Trinity to see some kids push the limits. So.
Awesome. How far is the youth triathlon?
Farther than I want to run, so.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Rule.
So mine's more of statements and I just wanted to let you know that I was very disappointed that you did not communicate beforehand that you would be stepping down from the dais during the public comment on Zoom at our last meeting. I'm also disappointed in the lack of transparency when you did that with me and the leadership view exhibited. I quote from the July third, twenty twenty four minutes. "The mayor and council members discussed the policy on taking comments from members of the public attending meetings on the city's remote online platforms. With the direction and general consensus from majority of council members present to allow remote public comment during meetings. The mayor will direct the staff to reopen that option with the exception of public testimony on quasi judicial matters unless prior approval is obtained. The mayor will work with legal counsel to craft language for a policy addressing this issue." Unquote. "Mr. Mayor, you may not always agree with the decisions as you look to your counsel for direction, but you were elected to lead and that is what you should do."
Any other council comments or announcements? Right. And Councilwoman Rule, I do owe your apology and the whole council for the lack of my explanation. I will explain my reasoning when we get to that item in just a couple of minutes. And hopefully I can provide some clarity on the actions and my behavior. At this time, I'll yield the Florida Community Planning Development. If there's no other council announcements. Planning and development director Jason Welker, who will introduce our next item, which will be a presentation from the city's development impact fee study consultant Tishler Bice.
Good evening, council. Hello, Connor. Welcome to, or Colin, sorry. Welcome to Sandpoint City Council. Joining us right now is Colin Mc. Sorry. Can you say your last name, Colin?
Yeah, Macweeny.
Macweeny, I'm sorry. Yeah, Colin Macweeny was here last week in the city of Sandpoint. He joined almost everybody at City Hall throughout the day on Tuesday for the kickoff to our development impact fee study effort. When I say almost everybody, I mean team members in every team. So we had a hour session with the entire Parks and Recreation Team. We had an hour session with the infrastructure team to talk about streets and pathways. He met with the fire department. He met with the police department. The the purpose of this initial kickoff session with all of these different team members was to basically begin the assessment of our existing levels of service in all areas of city government and infrastructure at the city of Sandpoint. And I think I, at the risk of sounding like I know what I'm talking about, I'm gonna hand it off to Colin, who is the real expert who we've brought on from Tishler Bice to usher us through this development impact free study. So we invited Colin here tonight to give a ten or fifteen minute presentation for you all on what development impact fees are and what Tishler Bice will be doing with us and for us as a city over the next few months. So Colin, I'll hand it off to you.
Wonderful. Thanks, Jason. And can you see that the slides changed?
We can. Yes, we've got your screen.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah. So again, Colin Macweeny, for the record, I'm at nine, nine, nine West Main Street, Boise, Idaho, eight, three, seven, zero, two. Just a little bit more background on the firm. You can see here a list of our specifically Idaho experience and then on a map here, just kind of generally where we are. But also generally where impact fees are being collected. And that's pretty much everywhere. You'll be able to find a population center in Idaho and they're crucial to our communities funding capital projects. Really, I just have a few slides here to go over impact fee fundamentals. We just kicked off the update, so really don't have any results to share at this moment. But just as a reminder, this is something Sandpoint's collecting today and it's a one time fee that's assessed on new growth to offset their new demand on infrastructure. This is not on if you remodel your home or your business moving into an existing structure. It's really on that new construction, bringing in a new demand, new, new road new traffic on your roads, new public safety calls for service, new demand on your parks. Importantly, there are strict parameters we have to play within, determined by state code. And first and foremost, we have to put together this nexus study that establishes three things, need, benefit, and proportionality. So first, the need, we show that by both looking at your growth, your growth assumptions, ensuring that there's enough growth coming into the community to necessitate expanding your infrastructure. If you weren't growing at a fast clip or didn't have a capital improvement plan that had growth related projects in it, then we probably wouldn't recommend a, an impact fee in those cases. But that's not the case here in Sandpoint or there in Sandpoint. You have a CIP that that has growth related projects, but also you're going to continue to grow, bringing in future demand on that infrastructure. The fee program has to have a, show a benefit to those that are paying the fee. In Idaho, we have to spend these dollars within eight years. So there's a time element, but then also a geographic element. Not too much of a concern in Sandpoint, but if, let's say, we're looking at a large county wide fee, you might separate that program into a couple of different benefit zones to ensure that dollars collected in the north stay in the north that they're not spent in, you know, far off areas of the county. Not too much of a concern in Sandpoint because geographically you're relatively small and we're going to be looking at citywide benefiting projects. So park improvements, road improvements, fire station improvements, all of those are providing a citywide benefit. And then lastly, the fees have to be proportionate. So we're only looking at growth related costs, but you'll also see a handful of different land uses in these fee schedules because retail has a different demand than office, which is different than multifamily, which is different than single family. We did your impact fees in twenty ten, I believe, and at that time we set your residential fee to the number of bedrooms. And so that helps with the proportionality because the the smaller homes generally are going to have smaller number of people in them and have less of an impact on average than your larger homes with larger household sizes. Importantly, these revenues only go to expanding your facilities. So buying new parkland, improving existing parkland, expanding your, your fire fleet or improving road intersections. It cannot go to maintenance, can't go to repairs. You know, if you had a leaky roof at your fire station, that wasn't a cause of of new growth. That was a, you know, a deficiency that that needs to be corrected with with non-impact fee dollars. This also can't go to operations or personnel costs. These set in separate revenue funds, separate from your, your general fund. And really, this is our one time revenues going to one time capital costs. Touched on a couple important elements in Idaho already, but you do need to have a advisory committee, a DFAC, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, who reviews the program annually, but also we we meet with them during these five year updates. You need to have a capital improvement plan justifying the collection of this revenue. And we're only looking at public facilities that have a ten year useful life or longer. So really brick and mortar items, swing sets that are going to last longer than ten years, fire apparatuses that have a long useful life. And we're restricted at the types of infrastructure we can collect for. And so those are utilities, transportation, parks and recreation, and public safety. So your DFAC is made up of five residents, two of which are within the development community. So these are home builders, commercial developers, realtors, and this is required for every city and county that's collecting impact fees. Really, they they review these studies to make sure that that they're valid, that the growth assumptions have been vetted, that the capital costs that we're including in the capital plan are reasonable. Any sort of comments or recommendations from that committee is passed along to city council. And they also should be reviewing in meeting once a year, your financials of those impact fee funds, just to ensure that we're collecting dollars and using them appropriately and that we're not, you know, stockpiling cash and not using it in a timely fashion. The process for, general process for an impact fee study, but this one too, is the first steps is for us to understand growth within town. And so we'll work with community development and planning staff to understand what's occurred in the recent past, but then also what's going to occur in the near future from a home construction, but also commercial development. Then we have those discussions with those department heads to understand levels of service and capital needs to address current or future demand. Look at different methodologies that we have in our toolkit when it comes to impact fees. We evaluate any credits. Generally, that's not too much of an issue in Idaho unless you're a resort town. And because resort towns do have that local option sales tax. And so we will take a deep dive into evaluating those other revenues that are coming in that are funding growth related projects, because we don't want to be double dipping. If you, you're a future resident, you ultimately pay the impact fee. If there's sales tax that you're paying that's going to the same project, we want to reduce the impact fee proportionally to make sure we're not double charging there. Eventually, we get to a final sort of draft fee amount and that's reviewed by the advisory advisory committee. We could also incorporate any other stakeholder groups. I believe you're, you have a, or soon to be, you'll have a park board. And so we can review this analysis with them as well and their capital improvement plans. We do have to go to your planning and zoning committee to amend the comp plan. This is just following state code, your your CIPs should sort of live in your comp plan. So this is just a text amendment for the appendix, including the CIP. And then final review by city council before adoption. Last slide here is, right now, you have Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, Streets and Pathways. And so we're updating all of those chapters, components of the program. But then also we're evaluating adding a stormwater component. Just kicked off all of these. So really don't have too much specific to say on any of these departments, but but this is what we're going to be addressing in our, in our study. Kept that pretty high level. But here, if there were any questions by mayor, city council.
Thanks so much, Colin. This is Jeremy. Nice to see you again. I just have a quick question, then I'll open up the council. On the process, you know, trying to be aware and sensitive of your time. I know that throughout the process, there may be a few methodology questions or decision points that come up. Can you, are you able to incorporate the council on some of those? And bring those to us as well as the impact fee advisor committee? I'm thinking, you know, our current bedroom breakdown, for example, or you know, how we're going to address stormwater or some other elements. Is there a way that you can just filter in that you can kind of check in with the council and 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 get our buy offs? What I'm trying to avoid is this getting to the end and causing you more work and the council potentially not liking a direction that it's moving.
Yeah, Mayor Grimm, good to see you. And we should meet in person next time I'm in town, but yes, yeah, yeah, I would, you know, recommend it and I really prefer to bring in council. Especially in person, you know, in a work session, just to hear your priorities, both when we're thinking about capital plans, but also we've been hearing, you know, especially since twenty ten, your last, your last study. But but more recently is the concerns for affordable housing. And, you know, we have a little bit more flexibility with impact fees. They're they're relatively inflexible, but there's a couple of approaches we can take to help with affordability concerns. And to your point, it's it's much, much preferred to do that midway through these studies instead of the end. And so next time I'm in town, we we're doing presently a handful of work outside of Sandpoint in your area. So I may be in town for for a Cootney County study that we're doing that. So we might be able to meet outside of sort of this dedicated timeline that we have.
Great, great. No, thanks, Colin. That's, I just, I know in the last update and being on your side of the counter there, sometimes it gets the end and you don't want to have to redo everything. If there's a different approach, the council prefers over the impact fee advisor committee. So thanks. I'd open that up to council. Council, any questions for Colin?
Mr. Mayor, I have questions. Just curious, who's on the DIFAC committee?
I defer to Director Welker for that.
It's our Planning and Zoning Commission plus one, I believe, representative from the, two representatives from the development community. So it is, our, our impact committee is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Plus, we have two additional members to to meet that quota.
From the development community? I don't know what that means.
So they have to be involved in real estate, building, or land use development. So that's state code. And I believe we have appointed members. I don't recollect who they are right now. That used to be Ivan.
One of them is a local architect and.
Wolfslager, maybe?
Scott Wolfslager is on there from Bowden Architecture. And Ivan Reymar is on there. I think he's, but he's a planning and zoning commissioner and a local developer. So he wears two hats on that committee.
Thanks. And Parks Board?
Not a requirement of code of the statute. So it's just our planning commission plus two additional members, specifically from the development.
But the same as the DIFAC.
I think Colin was referring to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which will convene for the first time in September. So we have the several new committees and commissions. I believe that's what Colin was referring to when he said the parks.
And one is, oh, one is parks?
Parks and Rec.
Right. We have the Parks and Rec Commission, the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee, Sustainability Committee, yeah.
Is the parks one formed?
We have formed that. We've, a couple of months ago, you approved appointees to that. And I think Melissa is working on scheduling the first Parks and Rec Commission meeting for September. Yeah, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's already scheduled, actually.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Along with pedestrian bicycle commit, commission, committee, sorry, is already scheduled as well. So we, that's part of my update for you tonight. I'll share it.
We can update that in a second. Anything specific for Colin?
Yep, nope.
Regarding impact fees?
I just had, if, I guess I was most intrigued by the double dipping piece. If you could give a little more detail on specifics to that, like where does that commonly happen? What do we need to watch out for?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and Council, that's a good question. The you know, we do, we sit down with your finance and budget staff to really understand the flow of dollars, because in, I believe there's going to be a bond going out or a referendum coming out that's more, more or less looking at road maintenance. And since road maintenance is separate from roadway expansion, then generally there'd be no credit in those cases, because those are two separate dollar, two separate pots of dollars. And so there'd be no double, double collecting there, but the credits themselves would be sort of embedded in the final fee calculation. There is another form of credit and that would be if a developer were to put in, let's say, park, park improvements or make street improvements or pathway improvements above and beyond what they need to do within their traffic impact analysis. Then that, that dedication could be a, could result in a credit in their impact fees, because they're already mitigating their, their new demand on the infrastructure with that, with that project. And so that would, that would be handled on a case by case basis through, through staff and council.
Yeah. And Colin, also, I believe, you know, if we're taking general fund dollars, so collected through property tax and applying those to specific projects that are funding components of an expansion. Colin, that would probably also dive into that area of a potential credit.
Mayor, yeah, it gets it gets complicated.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the, a lot of project, not a lot, but you know, there's going to be these projects where some impact fee dollars come in and some non-impact fees come in to make sure, you know, the project can stand up. But if there's a non-growth related share of that project, that other dollars, general tax dollars are coming in to fund and impact fees are funding the growth share of that project, then no credit is necessary because there's not so that that overlap. And and so impact fees, as long as they're, they're sort of the whole source of the growth share of these capital projects, then then we're not double dipping. And so it's, you know, we go through that capital improvement plan and we look at the, the cash flow and financing of these projects that will be impact fee funded to understand sort of, you know, a deep dive on if credits are necessary enough.
Yeah, I think the takeaway, Council President Rule, is that.
Can I?
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to compliment you and you really hit where I was asking how you sort of defined. So if we supplement a project that's a new project with general fund dollars, as long as it's a new project and not a maintenance or anything, although it sounds like it's a little gray, then we can do those types of things because we're a small town. So even our impact fees might not provide all the funds to build a park of any reasonable size or something else that's needed, like a new fire station or whatnot. So I believe you answered the question for me. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you.
And no, that's great. I, I was going to say, just at the end of the day, the final report will sift through the data and the funding sources and tell us exactly what kind of credit we need to apply for the specific project. So any other questions for Colin? Great. Well, Colin, we look forward to working with you and seeing you up here. And thanks so much. Say hi to everyone at Tishler Bice.
Yeah, we'll do. Yeah, thank you.
Next, I will yield the Florida staff for some quick reports from the departments. I'll stay right up here, Jason.
Well, again, I've just got a few quick ones for you tonight. First, we'll start with our Parks Division. Just an announcement for the public. Traverse Park Parking Lot will be closed for one day tomorrow to allow for the asphalt trucks from Woods to get into the front of the James E. Russell Building. They will be doing the final two layers, which actually is just one big pour over the forty thousand square foot court surface to bring that asphalt up to the final height. So the, because of the amount of traffic that that paving is going to require, the safest thing to do is just close that parking lot for the day. Once that asphalt is poured, well, the countdown will start thirty days later. The local paint firm that we've hired will come in and do the acrylic top layer and paint the court surfaces. And by that point, the power to the building will be installed and it'll be the first time that you can walk into that building and see what it's going to look like when it's open to the public in three months. When we've got all the lights on, we've got the fans turning and we've got this beautiful new court surface completed. So we're about thirty five days out from the building actually looking like an indoor sports center instead of a giant construction site. Thanks to Rick for joining us on a tour of the building last week. And we'd love to take any of you on a tour of the whole Traverse Park project. It's, there's so many moving parts, as you know, there's so much going on there. But it's, it's a great time to see the building because we're, we're actually approaching the finish line for the James E. Russell facility. You may have noticed, I sure did, when I walked to the farmer's market last weekend, that quite a few street trees downtown have been cut recently. Joel's looking at me. I think you probably noticed, Joel, some of them actually out in front of your restaurant. The Parks Maintenance Crew has been assessing the health of our city street trees downtown and has been selectively removing some of those with the plan to replace them in the near future with some urban forestry funds. So yeah, you'll notice that some of the trees that weren't very healthy have been cut off about three or four feet above the ground, leaving quite ugly stumps behind. Well, that was intentional because eventually they're going to pluck those out with an excavator and replace them with healthier, newer street trees. So that's part of our urban forestry efforts, but that's a Parks Maintenance Project, since our Parks Maintenance Crews maintain city rights of way. I've got an update in the planning world. The Planning Department has approved a food truck at the Winter Ridge Parking Lot. Now, why is that significant? Because, well, first of all, we all love food trucks. But second of all, it's, 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 it's kind of, it's kind of shows how the Planning Department under our new city planner is, is looking to interpret code in ways that can be considered more business friendly. In our code, we've in the past required conditional use permits for food trucks. We still will require conditional use permits for most food trucks. But the language in the code says that as long as a food truck's operation is ancillary to the business being conducted on that location, a CUP is not required. As you all know, I ran there to get my muffin before the meeting tonight. Winter Ridge is a food establishment, so we interpreted that to mean that food trucks should be permitted under our city code in the parking lot. So that is just an example of how our, our staff in the Planning Department is, is looking to support local businesses that want to, you know, conduct good business and serve our community to a high level. So and it's another example of an area of code that is going to be looked at starting this fall, when we see developments slow down at the city, we begin tackling our code amendments and bringing those to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to you all for consideration in the next year. Which is a big thing. We're excited to engage our new city planner, Bill Dean, in fairly soon. Okay, you, you heard earlier, I was going to provide this update, the committee commissions. We are convening the first two, the fully formed bike ped or ped bike commission or committee this September. I believe the first meeting is September fifth. I'd like to thank Melissa for taking the initiative of coordinating those first commission and committee meetings with the recently formed boards. And I believe the Parks and Rec Committee or Commission is going to be probably the second week of September. We're still finalizing that first meeting.
September eleventh.
Okay, September eleventh, Parks and Rec. You're going to see on the agenda tonight some updated language around the Urban Forestry Commission as well. Okay, I've got a few rec updates and that's it for me tonight. We've had twenty one, actually twenty two as of an hour ago, applications for the James E. Russell Facility Supervisor Position. Incredible response. Five of those have already been moved to the interview stage. In fact, the one that arrived an hour ago looks like an outstanding candidate as well. We're probably going to schedule an interview with that individual. We are really excited to, hopefully in the next week or two, offer that job to somebody to come help us get this building open to the public and be the face of the James E. Russell get this building open to the public and be the face of the James E. Russell Building for this for the recreation community in town. Summer programs, sports programs are wrapping up. Coed softball league playoffs start tomorrow night. That's been a real success this year. And we are hosting a movie night in the park right across the street here at Pine Street Field. We're showing the movie Sandlot a week from Friday. Yep, this is one of Katie Bradbury's initiatives to try to get neighborhood kids out into our parks. So we'll be hosting an outdoor movie night a week from Friday. We invite members of the public. The movie will start at seven thirty at dusk, and there will be the library and a few other education organizations will be on hand with program information.
Director Welker, just sorry to interrupt. Is there any kind of legal licensing we need to provide? I know that you can't just play music. Are we all set on that front, or can you check?
We'll I will check, but I believe as long as we're within the noise ordinances, ten o'clock.
No, it's the copyrights of the the film.
Oh, no, we're.
Specifically.
Well, we paid six hundred dollars for the licenses.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah. No, we are we license the film.
Okay.
Yeah, rest assured. You may have seen on the Facebook feed for the Parks and Rec Department, there are some exciting new youth programs coming down the pipe. There are non-school day camps that are being offered this fall, starting in November. Sorry, no, this is for the October breaks. Katie took the initiative to organize some some basically some rec rec department programs so that kids whose parents have to go to work can come participate in these non-school day programs. So Katie's taken a great initiative on that. She organized something called Kids Night Out, which will be the third Friday of every month, starting in November for kindergarteners through grade six. This is a to give parents an evening out without needing to look for a babysitter. Includes activities, movie, and pizza. So that I I think Katie's looking at using the rec room at the James E. Russell Building for that program as well. So we're already looking at ways to activate that recreation space. And finally, the return of kids coed flag football this September. We've got programs starting September twenty first for coed flag football for kids. So a lot going on in the rec division, and I hope by the next time I see you, we will have a James E. Russell Building Supervisor on our staff.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Welker, since you brought up the trees, I noticed the other day in our right of way, some of the new trees that were planted on Division right near Grippson Tire need a little love. So if you can put that on your radar, since staff seems to be out assessing trees.
Did you hear that, Eric? Our urban forester, Eric, will take note, but we'll have the Parks Team have a look at those.
Oh, okay.
Particular trees are, we do not maintain them. They're the adjacent property owner, but we can chat with those adjacent property owners to remind.
But we planted them with that new project, so if they.
Did plant them, and we gave planting instructions, and homeowner said, yes, we'll take care of them. But it it's the adjacent property owner's responsibility, so we'll we'll ping them to.
Okay, so we may need to look at a change in policy if we're planting a lot of new trees because if we have to get them rolling before they can sort of thrive on their own, we might, I would suggest we maybe when the new urban tree committee gets rolling, that that's something in there. Yeah, we don't want to plant trees and not have them grow. Thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, make this a question, a food truck. You said you already have a food truck?
Sorry?
To go a food truck in Winter Ridge Parking.
No, the Winter Ridge owners applied for a permit for a food truck in their parking lot. And in our in the planning staff's analysis of that application, we determined that that was that fell under what our code describes as an ancillary use.
Okay.
Because food is ancillary to food, so it made sense to approve that administratively. Normally, a food truck application would go through the whole planning and zoning review process. A recommendation we made to city council could take months and cost seven to eight thousand dollars to get a food truck permit approved. Not the most business friendly approach.
So it's Winter Ridge that's putting a food truck?
Yes, yes.
On there.
Correct.
Okay, the trees, I am concerned about the trees. I've been talking to Eric quite a bit about the trees being cut down around town. Is somebody making sure that they are not suffering from the winter weather that has killed or looks like it's killed a lot of trees? Because I've had many urban, I've had many arborists tell me to wait until spring to see if those trees come back. So I just want to make sure somebody is checking that it's not weather related, that they might come back. I've had trees in my right of way that looked dead. Some still do, some might not make it, but some late in spring did start leafing and blossoming. So I have been told to leave those trees alone until next spring and see. So I just want to make sure we're not cutting trees down before we give them a chance. So I don't know who's in charge of that. Sustainability Committee, is that on the block to start? Okay.
That's the next one, yeah.
Okay, thanks, because I have, Mary has asked, people are asking.
Yeah, our goal is to get those those three already appointed committees meeting in the month of September.
Thank you.
And we've got those first two, I think, scheduled or almost scheduled. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else for Jason?
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jason. Any more other departments want to give a brief update? Cheryl from Central Services.
Good evening. This evening, I'm gonna just give you a quick update. We're going to go over special events first. The Cottage Market is on Sundays at Farm and Park. The next one is this Sunday from eight AM to six PM. We have the Sandpoint Summer Music Series. The first concert is tomorrow at Farm and Park. The music's supposed to start about six o'clock. Of course, we have the Peak Seven B Youth Triathlon. The Worship at the Beach is on August thirtieth, and that is from four PM to eight PM. It is open to anyone who would like to participate, that is at City Beach. Then we have we have the Spud Cup Regatta coming up at Windbag August thirty first to September first. And the Ponderay Cup is in its final permitting process right now, and that's a five day event. Thursday, September fifth to Monday, September ninth, and it's at Memorial Field in Traverse. And it's the annual soccer tournament. On the HR front, we are like Director Welker said, we are continuing our interviews for the Sports Facility Supervisor. We are continuing interviews for the Human Resources position with the next one being tomorrow. And we have filled the Administrative Central Services position. Heather Faircloth is her name. She starts next Wednesday, and the pre-treatment operator in training starts September third, I believe, at the wastewater treatment plant. So a lot going on, but that's pretty much the the update for now going on at Central Services. We're just just busy helping all the departments.
Cheryl, did I I probably missed it. Did the council hear that we did not get the Public Works Director Sam, who was interviewing at our last meeting?
No, we heard back late last week that she took another position. She talked highly about the city of Sandpoint. She was really impressed with our team, with our council. It just wasn't the best fit for for her and her husband, where personally, they they felt was the best fit to live, so.
Yeah, and we're we're continuing to hear the housing costs and related barriers to especially people moving to the area. So.
Yes.
We've gone back out with our recruiter and continue are continuing to recruit for that position.
Yes, and that's it. Is there any questions?
Have anything for Cheryl? Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Chief Kuhn. Good evening, Mayor Council. Just a quick update to keep everybody apprised to what what little I've been doing. Just focusing strictly on the Animal Control Service Agreement. I know we've had a lot of conversations. I want to just give you a quick update of where we're at and kind of where we're going with some dates. I've spoke with the mayor, I spoke with legal counsel this last week about presenting an ordinance change and repealing our current requirement to license dogs and make it a free program through the city. Our goal is to have that language change and in front of the council by the eighteenth of the month, which is next month, the second council meeting. Have the RFP completed based off that language change at the same time. So the following day on the nineteenth, I believe it is, is that we'll put that out on the nineteenth, that RFP, and then have it back in front of the council on October second to have it adopted. So I know it's a it's a whole lot in a in a short amount of time, but I think it's pretty attainable with what we can with what we're doing and moving forward with, so. Any questions on that?
And Chief, that RFP specifically is for services to provide.
Right.
Care and shelter for stray dogs that the city police pick up.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and when did we you say we'd be able to get the RFP? Or were you you were hoping to get it to us?
The for finalization would be that first council meeting in October.
October.
Yep, so the goal is to have all this wrapped up in the next, let's say, month. But we're just probably shy of that. So, yeah, to have it to have a completed finalized October second, our contract currently ends, I believe, in the September with the BTA have something in place and ready to go, that first council meeting for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
The goal of repealing the licensing ordinance is to remove our legal requirement to provide animal control. Is that correct?
No, it requires the license itself. So right now, we have a a requirement to license your dogs in the state in the city. The goal is to take that away and make it make it a free program. By doing that, it does change some of the mandatory requirements for the city, not to stop doing it, but to change the way we're doing it.
Okay.
I I had an interview with a reader this week, and they 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 asked what what's the contingency plan? You know, in the interim, and I mentioned that we will have budget authority once you adopt the the budget tonight. And, you know, if it's not BTA in the interim, it may be a doggy hotel at a fixed price per or vet at a fixed price per day per per dog. So we will be taking care of any strays or dogs that are picked up by the police force. No matter what happens in the next month, I rest assured, we're we're not going to, you know, euthanize them or leave them stranded, so to speak. So we have contingency plans, we have operational plans, and the chief has put together a path forward for us. So you'll hear more about that the second meeting in September.
Correct.
And perhaps I could chime in here as well.
Please.
It it it's my opinion that these ordinance changes that we are proposing to council will relieve the city of the obligation to impound stray dogs under under most circumstances. That certainly doesn't, that's certainly not going to relieve the city of the discretion and the police of the discretion to impound stray dogs. And so that's that's the distinction that we're trying to make, so that basically someone can't just pick up a dog, bring it to the impound center and say, we found it in the city of Sandpoint, the city of Sandpoint has to pay for it. No questions asked, full stop. So that that that's essentially the the tweak that we're trying to make, and we will be presenting that to you in short order.
Thank you, Chief. Everything else hanging in there?
Everything's good. I know we got a long meeting, tons of events, lots going on, but overall, we're doing a fantastic job, so.
Great, great. Thanks for your service and protection. Chief Gilchrist, anything, anyone else have anything to report back there? If not, we can move along. Great. So before we enter the public forum, I I do want to first and foremost apologize to you, Council President Rule and the council. At the last meeting, I surprised all of you by stepping down from the dais during the video Zoom portion of the meeting. As you are aware, I'm the presiding officer of these meetings. As such, I do have the legal ability to direct the rules and procedures in order. If I chose, I could point blank stop all Zoom comments. I did not do that. I I shared my perspective on the Zoom, the video testimony from remote. I I brought it to you. You, the majority of you wanted to continue that process. As such, I'm I am not a fan in any way for Zoom and remote testimony. I think there's too much vitriol, hatred, and toxicity in the world, and I see no need to open these meetings or our community up to that from the outside of this community for convenient Zoom drop ins. And as such, and because of the legal gray area, and happy to speak with any of you offline with our attorneys and the lack of distinction of where we can cut someone off due to First Amendment rights and free speech. I am uncomfortable, like a pacifist in war carrying a gun. I am uncomfortable presiding over hate and vitriol and toxicity and knowing when to turn it off, and I want no part of it. So like I said, I could shut it off. I'm letting the council use this tool that you want. I want no part of it, and I will continue to step down during the Zoom video portion of the meetings and let the council president preside. So I hope that explains my position. I respect you all and want you to be able to have that tool if you want to continue to use it. I will not take it away.
I respect your statement, but as I said earlier, your council directed and you accepted the direction and went through the process with legal. And I'm, again, extremely disappointed in the fact that you are elected. Our job up here is not always an easy job. We have to do a lot of things and make a lot of decisions we don't want to make, but that's what people put us up here for. So I'm still very disappointed in my experience after sitting up here for more years than anybody up here and and sitting and being on commissions with the city longer than you worked for the city or longer you've sat here. There's been only two instances where there's ever been a problem. And so to express to the public and and give the impression that this happens every time we have a little city council meeting, I think is very inaccurate, and I would wish that you would speak in a more accurate manner when you're discussing this.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Rule, I appreciate that. I did not mean to suggest that it happens every meeting. I think the potential for it to happen at any meeting is very real. And, you know, if you're uncomfortable presiding over the Zoom meetings, I'm happy to remove them from from the forum as an option, too.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a manipulation.
Okay, I appreciate your your comment. I don't agree, but moving forward, the next item on the agenda is the General Public Forum, which allows the public to address the council and myself on items listed on the consent calendar or any relevant city of Sandpoint related topic not included on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak now or during the other portion of the meeting when public comment is allowed, just just a reminder that you'll need to complete the comment sign up form located at the table by the door and hand it to the chief or one of the other staff members in the back of the room. Those attending remotely who wish to speak during the general forum may raise their hand on the Zoom at this time to accommodate those who wish to speak during the general forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items. On our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the general forum. At the beginning of the meeting, if you'd like to speak and did not have the opportunity to do so in that timeframe, we will reopen the general forum at the end of the meeting. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous and disruptive, no calling out, no clapping, no holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that council cannot take testimony on any planning related matter outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint City Limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak in the room during the public forum?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Has anyone speak up remotely to speak from the public forum other than potentially Miss Hawn?
I am not seeing any hands raised on Zoom for public forum. I'll give everybody just a moment. No, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe anyone is interested in speaking during public forum this evening.
And that will conclude the general public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is seven hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents for regular payables. Counsel, are there any questions or any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? As such, I will entertain a moment to a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Removed.
Second, move my dick, second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to new business, and we've rearranged the. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, moving on to new business, um, and we've rearranged the agenda tonight. Uh, not a conspiracy. I put the old business on the lot at the end, just so we can get through some of this public stuff that's uh. Critically important, and then we have some consultants in the room too, so. Wanted to get through that. So moving on to new business, um. This is a, as I mentioned, a little bit out of order. Under new business, we have what I think will be a couple of other quick items, as well as an item that we need to take up ahead of our budget. So we'll hear new business first. Uh, first, the presentation on the Bridge Street Rehabilitation Project under item four, and at this time I would yield the floor to Construction Manager Holly Ellis. Hi, Holly.
All right, one moment while I share my screen. Sorry about that. Um, Holly Ellis, Construction Manager. Uh, joining me today is Ben Davis with Keller Associates. He is the project engineer on this project. Uh, and tonight we are presenting the Bridge Street Bridge Rehab. So. Uh, you introduced yourself.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council for having me. Ben Davis with Keller Associates, lead our transportation team out of our Courtyard Lane office. So. This has been about a year and a half coming now. Uh, since this project started, we started with a feasibility plan, which Holly will kind of cover some of the results of that. Now we're. Um, ready to bid the project, so. Pretty exciting.
Excellent. Thanks, Ben.
You're excited. So this is our Bridge Street Bridge. This connects our downtown to City Beach. Um, it's our primary and only connection to City Beach and also to our lake water treatment plant. So. Keeping this bridge in uh good condition is certainly a priority for the city. Um, super brief history uh of our inspections and how they came about. ITD does biannual inspections on our bridge. Um, this is from a, a disaster that happened in nineteen sixty-seven. The Silver Bridge collapsed. And in response, the highway, Federal Highway Administration established regular um national bridge inspection standards. And in compliance with those, ITD inspects our bridges every two years. And unfortunately, this incident, uh, forty-six individuals were killed. So now with our uh bridge inspections, uh, we get a report from ITD and um. With the report, we gave it to Keller and Associates. We engaged them to give us a feasibility plan, and the purpose of that plan was to look at our bridge, assess the condition. And um, kind of give us a path forward in the next ten years. What is our priority? Uh, they prepared uh the graph that you see on the screen for two pieces of the bridge, the superstructure, which is above and includes the deck, and then the substructure, which is below. And the condition for the substructure is fair through twenty twenty-six. The importance of that is once it drops below fair, ITD could impose um, uh, weight restrictions. Which is important for us as we have development on that far side of the bridge. Um, and our water treatment plant, it, it would be imperative that we don't have load restrictions on our bridge. Anything to add on the background of the bridge or condition or your assessment?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, so the substructure, as it implies, is, is the foundation of the bridge. These are steel shell piles, and the issue that you're facing specifically. Is you have a steel um pile that the bridge is resting on that's exposed to water, but then the, the water level varies. And the same thing happened on the Long Bridge. Uh, ninety-five going out of town, ITD faced it and they went through a similar rehabilitation technique that. We are suggesting and we've designed for this project, but essentially because that. Uh, pile is exposed to water and then exposed to air, you get rust and corrosion. And so what we did in the feasibility plan was looked at the more risky components and what could be done to extend the life of the bridge. Assuming that you would replace it in a ten to twenty year horizon. And that's what we determined. Uh, uh, and looking at the IT inspection reports, we're able to give us a glimpse back in time of, okay, well. How, is this condition worsening? And then um, using that and some software as well, we're able to predict. You know, when that would um go into a poor rating or a load restricted state. Um, so yeah.
Yeah, um, Ben, just to go back to that graph, if you don't mind, uh, assuming we bid this work and do this work, um. What does the fair rating extend to on the substructure? Uh, does it extend out something matching the superstructure and deck?
So it extends to twenty twenty-six based on our findings. So. At that point, um, we would assume that the bridge may become weight restricted by ITD. Does that answer your question?
If we do this work, this repair work.
Do this work? Yeah, so if, if you do the work, it'll essentially stop the corrosion. So your um substructure would maintain essentially a fair condition. As long as the product that is being installed um lasts.
And it's expected to, will it last until twenty thirty-seven, you think?
Yeah, it's, it's like a, you know, um, twenty-five to fifty-year type.
Right.
Horizon for that. It's, yeah, very popular product to use in our industry. Like I said, used on the Long Bridge as well, so.
So on the uh left side of your screen, this is a snip from our uh ITD maintenance inspection. When they do those inspections, they give us recommendations. So this project is. Uh, seeking to work on the, their first recommendation on there, which is to clean and coat the steel shell piles, which is a high priority. And the picture on the right is a picture. Of those steel shell piled and um, you can visibly see the corrosion there. So the scope of work is to protect and maintain the capacity of the steel shell piles. So um, the piles on the top right. This is the substructure. You can see the, I kind of tried to highlight these in orange. The piles and the cross braces are what we're rehabbing. So the piles are going to get a multi-layered system. There's a tape wrap that they'll put on each pile, and then they'll put an HDPE jacket. And then the cross bracings will be protected with an epoxy. So there's some pictures of the application. Uh, one thing we're trying to, you'll see a diver in a couple of those pictures. We're planning to do this work when the water levels are low, which will really save on de-watering costs. So you can see in the, the picture, I took that over last winter. So they won't, we won't need divers on this project, although it's, it's pretty frequent that um this product. The, I think the Long Bridge, I think they use divers, for example. Um, one thing to note, we do have the pedestrian piers as an add-on. So fingers crossed we get good numbers and we'll do the entire bridge. If our numbers come back high, um, it'll be an additive alternative. Can we afford to do the pedestrian bridge piers or not? Um, it's cost-effective to do them all at one time. At the same time, the pedestrian. A bridge does not have the load restriction implications that a vehicular bridge has. So we'll have to balance that when we get the prices back. Anything to highlight on the Denso product or?
I mean, just, just briefly, it's a multi-coating product. So. The, you know, the piles that you see there in the photo will be cleaned. Then there's a series of products that are applied. It's a, you know, epoxy glue co- um, compound and then a wrap. So like Holly said, HDPE. So the appearance. One complete will be like, it, it'll look black, basically. So it's uh, if, if y'all have been out to the Long Bridge and you can see on that bottom. Left photo along with the raft there, it's that black plasticky type look. So that doesn't bring any of the um. Material back, any of the section loss of the steel back, but it prevents it from. Occurring any furthers, kind of reiterating your point there, Mayor. So, yeah.
Some more pictures of the existing condition of the bridge. Uh, schedule and budget. So tonight before council is our request to bid the project permitting is complete. Our, we're at ninety-five percent design, so. Um, Ben and his team over at Keller are working to wrap up their final design package. Um, they did a great job on our feasibility assessment and this. Providing both um on time, within budget. Uh, we'll get this project. Provided council approval out to bid September, October timeframe, back to council for a board. And then uh the schedule will be to actually do construction this winter over November, February, again, when the water levels are down. Uh, we'll notify the public prior to that work. It should be quiet, um, or minimally invasive. We're not anticipating the need for traffic controls. Um, hopefully no one knows that they're even out there doing this work. Uh, well, we would like to allow them to work all days of the week if they'd like, uh, seven AM to ten PM, which is in accordance with our noise order, ordinance. Um, and our budget for this is by the general fund, and this is in the future FY twenty-five budget.
Council, have any questions for Ben or Holly on this?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Davis, thank you for being here. Um, I just want to make sure I understood with this, the raft on the rehab. Um, you said it should last twenty-five to fifty years. Is there anything in particular that makes it last longer? Anything we need to look out for? It just seems like such a large gap for such an expensive project.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question and um, I gave a range kind of on purpose.
Okay.
And, and that's, you know, partially because I want to, honestly, I would want to go back and like. Verify that number to be specific, but I know it's at least on the lower end of that spectrum. And then I also know with certainty that, you know, you will likely be looking for other reasons to replace that structure within that timeframe. Regardless, but this at least gives you a really cost-effective way to keep the bridge out of a load restricted state. To continue to use it as you plan and budget to get, you know, a bridge replacement. One of the complicated things when we are looking at a bridge replacement too, initially before we um work through some of the rehab alternatives, is this is an applicable waterway too. So that, you know, some of the cost implications with that can be substantial. So it buys you a lot of time in order to plan and make sure that you execute that project well.
Spencer Bandil, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Is this anything when funding comes that um Avarel may be. Wanting to participate? I don't know. It, it depends. They're going to need that bridge. They've talked about so many more people. I'm just wondering if that's an option of getting them involved in the funding when it. Comes up.
Um. I don't know. I'll, I'll ask them, Councilwoman Duquette, but um, in general, it's the city's responsibility to maintain its infrastructure. Um, but I.
But they're putting quite a, quite a burden on our infrastructure with the new. Hotel and the, what they consider will be, and it's just, just me thinking. I don't know, looking for money for.
I'll, I'll ask.
For Mr. Mayor, is there an opportunity or is this, is there a way to put the hotel into an opportunity zone that money? Goes into the coffer for bridge replacement or City Beach Park rehab maintenance repairs?
Uh, not so much an opportunity zone. It's a federal uh program that gets administered um. Not by us or the state. I mean, there's some state input on those. But um, as you'll see in our final item tonight, I do have some numbers on the projected um, you know, annual revenue that uh the hotel will provide to the city's general fund. Um, as well as uh our lodging tax projections, uh, given some assumptions uh for that hotel. So um. You know, I, I imagine this bridge issue, I'm, I'm glad to see that we can get out ten years on this fair condition, because. It's going to require federal funding. Bridges are uh horrifically expensive and uh, I imagine once we knock out the. Waste water treatment plant, we'll start looking at um, you know, other infrastructure needs and federal funding and grants for this.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Do we have an idea of what this is going to cost?
We do. Uh, we have a, an engineer's estimate and we budgeted for it in the FY twenty-five.
But we probably don't want to say that out loud if there's going to be bids.
Yeah, we, you can look at our budget and then we could chat um. Outside of a public forum on what the costs are. I'd be happy to share that.
Sure, okay.
Any other council questions on this? Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for Bridge Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project Design and authorize to advertise for construction bids.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
The Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, council members. Next, we'll move on to item five, the Trondark Award for the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Discharge Pond Cleaning Services. And I will again yield the floor to Holly. Thanks, Holly. Busy night for you.
Thanks. I, I don't have um, a presentation prepar- prepared for this one. Um, this is a regular maintenance project for our. Discharge pond at our Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. Um, our lake water treatment plant discharges affluent to a pond. And we go, we should ma- regularly maintain and clean that out. It's been a while. It's kind of been the um neglected maintenance for a while. So we are getting. Turbidity exceedances on our permit. So this effort is to engage uh. A contractor to clean out the pond so that we no longer are um. Having violations of our permit. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
And it's, it's like a big vac truck from what you explained to me, they go and suck all the, the stuff out of the bottom of the pond.
Hmm. Yeah, they're going to park a va- a vac truck along the um. Along the road and they'll have a three hundred foot long hose from that vac truck and they'll suction all of that material out. The expensive part is the hauling. So they have to haul that um away to dispose of it.
Council members have any questions? Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution warning the contract for Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Discharge Pond Cleaning Services, City Agreement A twenty-four, thirty-four, fifty-six dash six.
Removed.
Moved by Schreiber?
Second.
Second by Howard. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you very much and thanks again, uh, Ben for coming up here tonight.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
Glad you didn't ask me what the estimate was. I probably would have blurted it.
No problem. Uh, next item is item six. With our citizen advisory boards reactivated. We've been working through some amendments to city code to update our committee and commission ordinances. Final ordinance is being presented tonight for the new urban forestry commission. I'll now yield the floor to city urban forester Eric Bush for any questions from council. Hi, Eric.
Good evening, councilors. Um, I don't have a presentation tonight. I'm mostly here to just answer any questions you may have on the ordinance updates. Uh, but I did want to kind of make you aware in advance. Um, this ordinance update is only with respect to um reorganizing our urban forestry commission. Um, I will be doing a different ordinance update um at some point this winter or next spring on um. The urban forestry program as a whole, um, and our requirements for, you know, right-of-way trees, street trees and the like. Um, that will be a different ordinance update at a later date. Just so everyone's kind of clear what, what this ordinance update was.
Thanks, Eric.
With that, with that said, I don't have a presentation. If any questions arose, I'm be happy to answer.
Council, have any questions uh for Eric uh on the uh Urban Tree Commission Ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Anything in there about, and maybe that's for the next time on the Tree City USA standards. I'm just curious. Where we fall with those? Are we still?
Uh, I, I guess I, I need a little more detail uh with what standards?
This, with the Tree City USA, to be a Tree City USA, they have standards to be met. I'm just curious if that needs to be in the code. Is that going to be in your next presentation? Are we still a Tree City USA? Is that?
We, we are, are still Tree, uh, Tree City USA. It does not need to be reflected in the code. Um, our membership um with that organization. Uh, requires us to comply or we will no longer be members. Um, so I don't really see a need to.
Okay.
Codify it. Um, but that, that would be a, as a different portion if we wanted to continue, uh, contain that.
All right. Thanks.
Council President Rule?
Um, yeah, I had um a comment about the ordinance piece. Melissa, is it possible to pull that up?
Yeah, if you can give me just a minute, I can bring it up.
And it's down on page five of the ordinance.
That was not the one I was looking at. Anyway, it's, um, I'm not seeing it specifically in there. Can you scroll down a little further? Okay, so. Um, my comment basically was that, um, we, we refer to horticulture, which is the art and or practice of garden cultivation and management and ours also the arboriculture, which is cultivation of trees and shrubs. And I guess my point is that I'm hoping as we have this urban forestry commission that we, um, uh, spend some time to, um, take a better look at how we are caring for our trees. Like I brought up earlier, like we did talk to people who are in, supposed to take care of the trees in the right way as we're planting new ones. But is there a better way to address that until the trees get established? Um, and then that would, this would also cross over into, um, all the swales we've created downtown. Um, and some of our other right of way areas that, um, I think we could do a much better job to, um, take care of. I've also noticed, um, even on city property that, um, there's been, um, some spraying and grass killing around the bases of trees, which I'm sure over time will affect those trees. So, um, as this includes the horticulture piece, I'm hoping that the committee can put some effort into that and maybe come up with some better ordinances for the right of ways within the city and some better policies within the city itself. Um, so that we can do a better job to care for what we have and what we intend to put in. Um, especially if we're eventually get funding to do all of division. Um, and, um, we can care for our new trees. So.
Uh, Council President Rule, I completely agree. Um, my hope is that once we, um, point and get our commission up and running, we can task them with exactly what you just described. Um, and there's, there's kind of two pieces, um, in my opinion, that will really help that. One is public education. Um, you know, a lot of folks just don't know what they should or shouldn't do, um, to a tree or to plant materials in general, you know, to help it survive, help it, uh, thrive, all those sorts of things. So part of that is, um, exactly what I hope the commission can help with. Um, and the other, the other portion, um, with respect to, you know, maintenance and the right of way and, and the like, um, um, is primarily a funding related thing. You know, we need to dedicate specific funds to make sure that happens. Um, and there's various, um, ways in which we can do that and the commission should be able to help us, um, you know, parse some of that. Um, point is, I completely agree. And my hope is that we can improve those things with this commission.
Okay. And I will forward you some of the photographs that I've taken recently over the summer months to show you some of the um, areas in greatest need or, um, that have been neglected or I don't think are, um, up to the standard of what the city should be presenting itself as.
Please do. Thank you.
Any other council questions for Eric are related to this ordinance?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Charlie.
Um, there's a couple of thoughts I had about this. Uh, first one is, um, under meeting, uh, memberships, organization to meetings, item B, uh, members shall be limited to two full three year terms. And I believe we discussed this with another, uh, commission that I don't know that we should be excluding, um, community members who are really knowledgeable in this area of expertise sort of per life after they've served two terms. So I believe the compromise that we came up with before was to consecutive three year terms. Is that correct? That after, that you can't serve consecutively, you have to take a three year term off? Do you recall that?
I don't recall.
I recall saying that they would have to take some length of a break. I don't believe it was three years, but it would be a year or potentially more depending on the committee and that need. This might be much more of a niche than something that is planning commission or bike and ped and where expertise isn't needed. So that's what I remember requesting is that they could have a year of downtime. But I think it's probably commission or committee dependent.
And Counselor Schreiber, I think I can address probably part of your question anyways. Um, I'm sure you, you know, uh, through reading this, you've, you've kind of figured out that, um, you know, our, um, part of the reason where we've re, um, were, um, you know, reissuing this ordinance is so that we can get, um, you know, folks that have the proper qualifications to be able to provide insight as members of the commission. Um, obviously that is kind of the whole point, right? We have a tree commission so we can make improvements. Um, but part of that was, I think, contained under section B that you were just describing. Um, it's a couple of lines down with the exception of ISA credentialed members, members shall be limited to two full three year terms. Now, that's only a portion, um, but I think that, that kind of gets at at least part of what you were referencing. Um, and in that context, that was left in because, um, ISA, that means you're a certified arborist. Um, that's kind of the highest, uh, qualification we could hope for as members of our commission. Um, there's other ones, um, you know, landscape architects and the like that are similar. Um, but as far as just trees specific and spec- especially trees in, you know, an urban area like we're talking about here. Um, that at least gets us part of the way there. But I, I can, I agree, you know, there's in, uh, in standpoint, you know, uh, we, we do have kind of limits on some of the folks that may be qualified for this commission. So it could prove challenging in the future.
Yeah, that's actually another comment that I had in the section A there. Um, does lists very specifically who can be a part of this commission and, you know, comparing it to other commissions and committees that we have. Um, you know, I think it goes, it possibly goes a little bit too far. Um, you know, we don't ask people on the Parks and Rec Commission to be, uh, experts in designing parks or building parks. We don't ask the bike ped committee members to be experts in laying concrete, for example. But the way that this is written, everyone on the committee must be an expert in doing the actual work of caring for trees. Whereas I believe that the point of the committee or commission is to be the voice of the community directing the experts who are actually doing the work. And so I like the language that says the mayor shall endeavor to appoint. And I would love to see the mayor shall endeavor to appoint um, someone with that ISA credential, someone from a local utility. Um, but I think it goes a little too far when we say that two must be arborists, one has to be from the local utility and one has to be a local business owner or employee in a related profession. I think that limits us to only one point of view. And I think that there are plenty of people that don't fit those, um, descriptions in our community that would be a great fit for this commission.
And Counselor Schreiber, um, my intention when, when drafting those specific requirements was to, um, um, make, make the requirements tight enough to where you would be, you would have knowledge of arboriculture trees um, or something similar to that, um, without being too restrictive where we would kick, um, you know, other folks that might be interested out. Um, and that was part of why, um, the, um, you know, professional experience and expertise in arboriculture, urban forestry. Um, one member with a secondary education or professional experience in natural sciences. In natural sciences, that line was intended to be particularly vague. Um, that basically the intention was you have a background in science or something similar, um, whether professional or, um, you know, educational, um, which would give you some sort of background to provide, um, you know, helpful comment during, you know, these commission meetings, um, recommendations to council and the like. Um, this was, these changes were in response to the makeup of the previous committee, um, which, um, towards its end was, um, um, kind of working against what we were trying to do. I think I wasn't involved with that committee. It's just kind of responses that I've heard, but, um, we're, and we're trying to get this commission with members involved that we can make, you know, the decisions that we need to do and make the recommendations that we need to, to, um, keep things healthy and keep things moving forward appropriately.
Mister Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Spiro?
Just a, a friendly reminder, Counselor Schre- Schreiber. Went through a very difficult time not too long ago about trees. Um, people get really excited about them and I'm totally okay with making sure we have the highest qualifications. So we make the best decisions. So we don't get, uh, beat up, up here because of trees. So just my opinion.
And Counselor Schreiber, um, just to, um, the intention of the one local business owner or employee of a related profession in natural resources or forestry management. That was intended, you know, uh, North Idaho and this part of the country in particular, there's a, you know, heavy logging presence here. Um, and in drafting that line in particular, it was to kind of open that up for exactly those folks. Um, loggers obviously, you know, have a completely different function in their professional life than, you know, urban forestry. Um, but the knowledge is the knowledge and they're, you know, as in tune or more in tune with the health of these things than, you know, many other folks. So I was trying to, you know, open that up to a point, but not open it up too much where there was members with, um, you know, no related qualifications to forestry or trees.
Go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, um, could that be like a, a master naturalist or a master gardener or
Certainly.
somebody who's been through training like that?
Yeah. And that, that was the intention with the, um, natural sciences background of the, you know, kind of give that option and thinking exactly as you just mentioned, you know, master naturalist, gardeners.
And I, I think I agree that I would like to see people that really are knowledgeable. Don't we have an ISA? We have one with an ISA credential, I believe.
In town?
On the committee.
Oh, we have one applicant with a credential on the committee.
Yes.
Commission.
Any other questions, uh, for Eric?
Not a question as much as just debate on the subject, but I don't know if it's appropriate to wait till a motion has been made.
I could turn to, uh, our legal counsel. I, I could see it going both ways. I'd like to get the questions out. Once there's a motion, you can debate then, or what, what's the proper procedure, Fondar, Melissa?
That's correct, Mister Mayor. So as long as there aren't any further questions for staff, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion and a second, at which point you can have further discussion. Again, it's not a vote that requires unanimity. So at some point, just express your opinions in deliberation and then the mayor will call for the vote.
Thank you. Um, any other questions for Eric at this moment? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, Mister Mayor.
I will now ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title Seven, Chapter Fifteen, Urban Forestry, and amending Sandpoint City Code Title Two with the addition of a new chapter eleven, Urban Forestry Commission, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication and an effective date.
I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Spiro, second by Dick. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is, Mister Mayor.
Not discussion, it's debate.
So, looking at the, the duties and responsibilities of this commission, um, you know, actually doing the work of caring for the trees is not primary among them. And in fact, an arborist might not actually be the correct pick for, uh, preparing grant applications or preparing a budget or, um, and, and to respond to your comment, I think that these committees are the ideal place for the community to have a voice so that it doesn't get to the point where people feel so ostracized. And I think that it could allow those comments to funnel through a committee that could then, um, collate those into actual recommendations, actionable things for us to do. Um, rather than creating a wall between us and the community that only experts can be a part of.
I think it doesn't seem
Go ahead, Councilman Spiro.
I accept, I respect that. Thank you.
Doesn't seem like they're asking just for experts. If, if a master naturalist or a master gardener, somebody with like, I, I mean, like Eric had said, somebody like a teacher like myself who has taught, you know, outdoor ed at all. That's not a, I don't think that's a real harsh. I do, I wouldn't think it was so hard to find people, but I know that it is because I've been asking people. We do have a staff, we will have a staff member.
And a council member.
And a council member on there, which.
And Councilman Schreiber, I'd also add that, um, with all my appointments, you, you and the council have the ability to reject those if you think it's swinging one way or the other too far. Um, so I would bring these as appointments, council would approve them. So if that makes you feel a little better, I, I hear what you're saying, um, very much, but, um, I'll leave it to the council here.
And ask what sort of people are you? Just like somebody who loves trees?
Well, and somebody maybe who's familiar with public works. I mean, there are trees, uh, offer a lot of benefits for roads in stormwater and that wouldn't be the area of expertise for a forester or a, a, um, a logger per se. Um, and like I said, you know, somebody who is, um, familiar with going after government grants, isn't necessarily the expertise of an arborist. And I mean, honestly, I've, I've personally been trying to recruit people to this commission. And, uh, I've gotten the feedback that, uh, if the city wants this level of expertise, then they should hire a consultant like they do for every other thing. We don't ask, uh, transportation engineers to be on our Parks and Rec or, uh, bike ped committee so that they can design our sidewalk walks for us. We pay money for that. So, um, I think that, you know, having the vision of the community represented on this commission, that then the experts that we hire to actually perform the work, uh, can work out the details of, um, how it gets done. Now, I do absolutely think that at least one arborist is crucial and I understand why there should be somebody from the local utility on there. I don't know if it should be a requirement because, um, then if we can't find one, then we don't have a commission. So I like the language that the mayor shall endeavor to a point. But, uh, the requirements that two have to be arborists, um, and one has to be from the local utility. Uh, I think it goes too far.
Well, uh, thank you for sharing. I, I believe the utilities will, uh, they're very concerned about trees and their power lines and the right of ways. I, I think they'll probably be accessible, uh, to someone from the utilities to serve. Um, I, I guess I put forth, um, councilman, that there's a couple of options. One, you can, um, obviously vote no, you can try to convince the council that this needs refinement. Um, that if you, uh, that's the direction you wanna go, I would say you need to make a uh, compelling statement and request right now to the council to, um, pause this and bring it back for refinement unless you have language right now that I'm not sure if you can make minor changes to ordinances at this state, but
Well, you have a, you have a pending motion that needs to be voted on first.
Yeah. Um, so, um, for the, before we close debate and call for the question, I'm just looking for, to give you some, some direction on your
Mister Mayor, if I might just make a comment. Um, if we get to a point where we cannot find enough people to get on the committee, we're gonna have to open that door further. And at this point, it's not written in stone. Um, so I think when we get to the appointment stage, if you are having trouble with the appointees and the resumes that are turned in, then that would be a time to come forward and, and we could do it then while we can still pass this now. Um, potentially if council's in agreement and as we've all from my impression, all of us and all of the city has been really wanting to get these commissions moving. So we can come back and make adjustments as we see fit, but we have to get feet on the ground first.
And Councilwoman Rule, I'd add to that, that, um, I would encourage your friends who aren't qualified. It does say endeavor. So, um, that doesn't mean we won't consider people who, uh, are not certified in any of these various elements.
Mister Mayor, it only says that the mayor shall endeavor to appoint at least two members that have the ISA credentials. All of the rest of the, the requirements are necessary. And that's, that's would be my motion would be to change the language such that these requirements are that the mayor shall endeavor to appoint candidates with those credentials, not that it's a requirement.
Uh, before we proceed, um, legal, um, at this stage, can you amend the language of this motion? We're withdrawn and there's a motion to amend to endeavor. Is that, are we capable of doing that at this point?
Oh, you have a motion pending with a second. So both of those would either need to be withdrawn or, uh, Mister Councilman Schreiber needs to make a motion to amend the pending motion and that needs to be seconded and voted on first.
Councilman Schreiber, would you like to make a motion to amend the original motion to add endeavor for those other qualifications?
Yes, I would.
And I would second.
Um, is that good enough or do I have to actually say it?
Where exactly do you want the word endeavor?
Maybe punctuation.
So I can change the language without having to make a separate motion?
Well, your motion would be to.
A motion, your motion would be to approve the ordinance with the modification of X wherever you want the word endeavor.
Okay, let me just. So I move to amend the motion with the modification of twenty-one, eleven, three, A, to say that the commission shall consist of no fewer than three and no more than five voting members, period. Oh, actually to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, period. The mayor shall endeavor to appoint industry professionals with professional experience and expertise in agriculture or urban forestry. One member with secondary education or professional experience in natural sciences. One member from the local utility. And one local business owner or employee of a related profession in natural resources or forestry management. Additionally, I'd like to add the word consecutive to item B. Members shall be limited to two consecutive full three year terms.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Can I ask a question of his amendment?
Yes.
Do you, we still want to endeavor to get ISA?
Uh, he left that sentence.
He did leave that in. Okay, I did not hear him.
There a second to, uh, the councillorman Schreiber's motion to amend?
Yeah, I would second.
Any discussion? This will be.
Moving to leaving the ISA in there.
At least one, I think ISA.
You've already have a motion in a second.
Okay.
This will be a, um, roll call vote on the amendment.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Howard?
No.
Councillor Spurrel?
Yes.
Councillor Ducat?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Okay, uh, do we go back to the original motion now?
Now you're going to take a vote on the, on the actual motion that he just made.
Okay, this will be a, um, a roll call vote.
And this is a roll call vote to, um, point of order for, uh, which was standing for the ordinance to pass its first reading by title only.
It's my understanding.
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
Councillor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Ducat?
Yes.
Councillor Spurrel?
Yes.
Councillor Howard?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once the ordinance entirety be suspended and the ordinance passed its second and third readings under suspension of the rules.
The moved.
Broken. Moved by Spiro, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Spurrel?
Yes.
Councillor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Howard?
Yes.
Councillor Ducat?
Yes.
Motion passes and the ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules will become effective following publication of the summary in the newspaper. Thank you, council members and staff. It's exciting to get these commissions going. For the final item under new business and before we proceed with tonight's budget public hearing, we will take up item number seven, the proposed Sixth Amendment change to order number six to the agreement with Gino Construction for Traverse Park Renovations Phase One. I will now yield the floor to Jason Welker and Maeve, um, for a staff update and presentation.
Good evening again, council. Um, tonight's change order includes several credits and one big new additional cost as you've seen in the staff report. Um, we won't dwell on the credits. They're for relatively small amounts. The one big additional cost that you saw in tonight's change order for our contract with Gino for the improvements to Traverse Park was for one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars approximately to complete the paving of the Traverse Park parking lot. Basically to wrap up the improvements to the south end of Traverse Park that have been taking place since October of last year. Uh, Maeve put together this great graphic today showing the current conditions. This aerial photograph was taken about three or four weeks ago, um, right before we did the ribbon cutting on the new skate park. And some of these, um, close up photographs were just taken last week or this week to kind of show the current state of the parking lot. So a little bit of background, um, I think the big question is why wasn't this budgeted for in the original James E. Russell project? And the answer to that has, uh, several components, but the simple component is that the James E. Russell project did budget for the asphalt work that only the trenching for the James E. Russell project would have created. And that would have been the storm drain along the east side of the building down to the sewer system on Pine Street. Um, you can kind of see where the letters LPR on the left there, um, right along the, the sidewalk where that storm drain crossed from the southeast corner of the building and came out onto Pine Street. That was the, um, kind of western extent of that trenching project. That has been filled in. That was about a twelve foot deep storm drain, I believe, about twelve feet by twelve feet. It's quite wide. But that was not the only excavation work that took place in this parking lot in twenty twenty-four. Um, the other two projects that were taking place at the same time, the playground to the west of the building required its own storm drain. Um, sorry, not storm drain, its own utility trench, which, which brought water to the splash pad. Um, and the required, the electric as well for the, for the splash pad and electric to the uh, west side of the building. Now, we managed to take advantage of that western trench or multiple utilities to serve all the new park improvements. Additionally, the skate park required a storm drain um, that was put in and required significant excavation in that area over there. So why didn't the James E. Russell budget two years ago include a full repaving of the parking lot? Because the James E. Russell budget did not account for all three of these park projects going on simultaneously. It did include eighty thousand dollars for resurfacing of the affected area for the James E. Russell trench. That eighty thousand dollars is being applied to the cost of resurfacing the entire parking lot now, which came in at around two hundred thousand dollars. So where is the other hundred and twenty thousand coming from? As I explained in my letter to you and I've spoken to several you, several of you since then, it is coming from the fiscal year twenty-five and this is not a real, this is not a, a taking money from another budget. This is our parks capital improvement budget. All along the fiscal year twenty twenty-five project was going to be completing the south, the, the improvements to the south end of Traverse Park, including the, um, skate park, tennis court resurfacing and playgrounds. So we are, um, requesting that we approve a change order for Gino right now. The reason we want to include this with Gino's contract is they are onsite. They will be putting asphalt down for the fire lane around the Russell building. They will be paving the, um, gravel walking path around the outdoor tennis courts. And at the same time, we expect them to do the parking lot with their subcontractors, uh, which I believe is going to be Woods Crushing and Hauling, who got the lowest bid for this project. Um, there are economies of scale, of course, of doing all this asphalt work at once. And there are mobilization costs that would be incurred if we were to take this on next year or the year after. The existing parking lot was last resurfaced twenty-nine years ago. Um, a lot of these conditions that you see in these photographs have nothing to do with the trenching. These were existing conditions. This parking lot was quite frankly crumbling into the ground long before we started the James E. Russell project last year. And it was overdue for, uh, a new, uh, top coat of asphalt before we began this work. So that's the background, um, the blue arrows here. Maeve, do you want to talk about your diagram here a little bit?
Sure. So the existing conditions right now, it, um, because of the, um, phasing of the skate park, uh, we did not know the exact phase until December of the, of twenty twenty-three. We had anticipated two additional grants and also an additional donation of approximately five hundred thousand dollars that did not come through. Um, if we had received that donation, we would have expanded the skate park. Um, an additional portion out in here, however, that fell through in the fall. So we had to make, um, our, our line basically with the funds in hand, which at the time were four hundred thousand dollars. Um, when we, when we did that, um, it resulted in a low area. So there is a low point that does have an existing inlet um, installed into the skate park. So it can take some of the overflow. But what we weren't anticipating is the extent of drainage from the existing site that currently drains into that exact area. And that was not, um, realized until we had done the storm drain excavation and the entire site was re-surveyed. Um, so now, uh, and we, we also, we've been testing the lines and um, n- now we know that we need to remove and replace the asphalt, particularly in front of the skate park and regrade it. So those arrows start to point to where this other low point is, which is actually going to um, take an existing manhole, raise it up to grade and put a grate on top of it. So that becomes a new inlet in the storm drain and then it would all flow out to the main line out here. Um, so that is, uh, one of the three main reasons. Um, the other reason as um, was highlighted was this is the existing conditions. You can see it's heavily fractured. This parking lot is right here. That hasn't been touched at all. We haven't driven on it. We don't use that at all. Um, we've used this lot a little bit, but this is, this area, I took these pictures on Saturday um, of last week and I matched them up with pictures from last winter before we broke ground really last fall. This is exactly the same condition, um, and that was taken in this area too. So, um, if we were to match the patch up against the fractured existing asphalt that doesn't have subbase, um, it will weaken the patches. Um, so aside from the drainage challenge, um, we will have uh, a weekend brand new patch, which the contractors have advised us that it would not last more than we might get through the winter, but most likely we would be returning next summer again to either patch or do some sort of, um, improvement. And then the third reason, which is arguably, in, in my opinion, the most significant is, um, if we don't um, if we only do patching, we currently do not have an ADA access point from Pine Street. Um, the, uh, access is, if you recall the plan, it's supposed to go, uh, there's a pathway that will be painted right in here and it'll connect with where the canopy is going to be. And then the plaza will go along the south end and connect all the assets. Um, so per the, um, ADA accessibility board, this is from chapter four of the federal guidelines. Um, we are required by federal law to be, to provide ADA accessible routes within our um, public sites. And so you need to have ADA access from a bus stop or from a sidewalk. Um, we do have ADA parking up against the building and we will have it re- restripped in front of the tennis courts and at the skate park, but we would not have ADA access provided from Pine Street with these conditions. Um, and furthermore, we are also required by federal law to provide accessible routes to all site amenities and, and public spaces. So now, if you think about it, we have fountains and we do have fountains within this new project. We have benches along pathways. Um, and we have a new accessible playground that would not, um, we would not have a full accessible route from Pine Street. Um, and the final reason with all of this is that this project is within the um, boundaries of the Land Water Conservation Fund, the LWCF grant. When you enter into those grant agreements, which the city entered into in the eighties, when they originally started developing this park from its original existence as a landfill, um, they entered into that agreement and Pine Street pathway is also an LWCF project. Um, while those are no longer compliant anymore with LWCF, which that puts us at risk when we do the inspection after the projects are adopted. We do an inspection with our grant administrator and if they were to come out with a laser level and discover that we were non-compliant with accessibility, we want to run the risk of having to pay back. Not just the playground grant, but all funds that have ever been given to us. So this is actually um, all funds that have been given to us by, uh, LWCF. So this is actually a pretty substantial situation, much larger than it seems. Um, and we have the funding in the parks capital funds. There isn't anything that we won't be doing next year that we had identified. We will still be doing the tennis courts. Um, and we'll still be doing the other projects in the area. Um, but it also speaks to the complexity of managing. It's actually four projects that we've managed out there because if you count the tiny woods bike course as well. Um, I'm managing the donor for the building and the donors as well for the skate park and the expectations that they have. The, there's now donors that have come in and contributed to the playground, um, and the landscaping. And, um, the bike skills course is all donor and grant funded, um, and the complexity of construction where things are moving at alarming rates around here. And sometimes the scope, there's not scope, but the, sometimes the damage is much larger than what the design team had predicted. Um, so when we were doing design, you know, over a year and a half ago, um, we had like, like Jason had said, we had intended to only focus on repairing in, in front of the building because that at that time was what, uh, that was the one project that I was working on. So um, it actually is, as Jason said, we are actually realizing significant benefits by doing it all at the same time this fall. Um, and we won't hopefully have to return for another twenty years. So.
Thanks Maeve, thanks Jason. Um, council, have any questions for Maeve or Jason?
Mr. Mayor.
So go ahead, councillor and Trevor, questions?
The last meeting, I believe we approved a change order for the skate park to put in an embankment to prevent uh, erosion and, and water infiltration into the skate park. Could you point out on the map where that is?
Yeah, that's the red strip of concrete on the east side.
Offside, offside side. Okay.
Yeah, so that, that was, um, again, this, when the skate park design was done a couple of years ago, it was assumed under previous administration that we would have put in a paved pathway on the east side of the park by this time. We are actually putting that into our park maintenance plan for next year. And our own park maintenance crew, who actually are qualified concrete workers, are going to be doing that concrete work, work themselves and probably save us as opposed to going out to bid for that a few tens of thousands of dollars by doing that themselves. Oh, we'll be asphalt. Okay. So, so we'll be doing that asphalt path from Pine Street along the east side of the park ourselves to match up with the concrete curb that Dreamland put in a few weeks ago. Cause right now that's kind of a, a dirt slash patchy grass knoll right there. And it's, it's kind of, if you go spend any time with the skate park, you'll see kids like skate up onto it and then pick up their skateboards and like walk along that side of the skate park. It really should be a paved path for um, north, south access for the skate park because ultimately there's going to be landscaping around the west side of the skate park there. Um, where all those arrows straight into or pointed to.
I just want to point out, the accessible route is not necessarily that route. The accessible route per our engineer on the project and also from Brandon is right here. Because you have to connect where there's crosswalks, the closest crosswalks and then also, um, connecting to the main plaza.
Um, other questions? Did you have?
Yeah, another question. So yeah, I did stop by and take a look at this and, um, the spot in the, the skate park where all the arrows are pointing. What is the plan for that?
Maeve, landscaping where the boulders. Can you describe the landscaping plan where the arrows are all pointing there on the west side of the skate park? We have some boulders ready to be placed in there.
Oh, yes. Um, so the original intent was that we were going to um, have the rest of the storm drain come through here and put inlets in because this is all the, the next phase of the skate park. But I don't have the money to put in all the inlets. And so I, I was hoping that I would, but we are so tight on budget and I really didn't want to ask for more money. So um, we are going to put riprap stone down, three, three to four inch stone where the embankment is on top of fabric. And then the larger stones will be used along the top of the embankment to um, keep cars from driving in. Um, and then the north part is where the landscaping buffer goes. That's that and also the plaza that goes in the middle of the tennis court. It's a separating walkway. Um, will, will be put in and also, uh, next spring landscaping will go up against the north side all the way, or I guess it's the south side of the tennis courts. So it's a, a sandwich of landscaping that you would be walking through, trees.
Yeah, when I was there, there's already wood chips along that north side there.
Yeah, we, that, that was my idea because when the skate park was nearing completion, we had a couple windy days and I saw just dust getting blown up into the air and it's like get, get into the park and I, I had, um, that was actually done with volunteers from, uh, Cedar Hills Church in Austin. Came out on a Saturday morning. I came out and we coordinated an effort just to put down some mulch. Austin drove and filled up our one ton parks truck and brought that mulch. And that's basically a temporary landscaping solution there to keep the dust from getting blown all around. The, the, we have a full landscaping plan with specific like plant species. And I think there's two mature trees set to be planted. The skaters have shared their opinions. They want shade. They want, um, some benches to, to put in there. So we're going to work with the Skate Park Association to get some kind of seeding around the north end of the skate park. But that's all part of our, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five parks capital. But that's all part of our uh fiscal year twenty twenty-five Parks Capital Improvement Project is to basically finish all that landscaping, which is already designed. In fact, we're meeting with our landscape architect tomorrow morning to go over that design. So we can hopefully put that out to bid this winter and get that work done in the spring.
Yeah, and also I just want to point out, the water for this part, the irrigation water is coming from over here. So the line, we can't run the line right now because we're tearing up everything for the canopy. Um, once we run the line, then we can turn the irrigation on. So Austin, our maintenance um staff did not want us to put in any vegetation because he doesn't have the the man capacity, staff capacity to water. Um, it would take substantial watering right now. So hopefully we can get it in with dormant trees. If not, we'll we'll plant it in the spring.
So back to that western side there, there's going to be an embankment built with large rocks to keep cars from driving into it. Okay.
And that's the boulders that are there.
That's not going to solve the the water intrusion problem?
No, what would solve the water is when we remove the asphalt and regrade it. Um, it will be raised up to match. There's a little bit of a hill here, a little bit of a slope um right where my cursor is on the northwest side of the skate park. And the slope will match that and then everything will grade down from there and flow to the southwest corner.
And so that area is going to be paved as parking for now. But in the future, we have another expansion of the skate park plan.
That's correct. The skate park, um part of the scope for the budget that we spent on the skate park included a full hundred percent construction drawing set broke up, broken up into phases. So the first phase was this phase and then the second one um is a complete. It's if it's the exact same footprint as over here. If you just flipped it over there for a total capacity of eighteen thousand square feet that was identified in the Parks Master Plan. And and actually, that project was the very first project in twenty twenty-one that was funded as part of the Parks Master Plan. So when we started all of this back then, when I first got here, that that had nine ninety-five thousand dollars obligated. So it was really an impetus for why I was even working on on Travers Park back then.
And so in order to be ADA compliant, we need a walkway north-south from the eastern entrance all the way to the Russell Building?
Correct.
And then, of course, there's areas where the utility work has dug up all that dirt there. And then the western entrance also got dug up.
Yes, the western entrance, originally, the design team had planned for it to go along the front of the landscaping. But when we had so much pushback over removing trees, we would have lost all of those trees over there. So in the fall, late fall, Jennifer changed the plans and said, don't cut down another tree. I want you to just put it through the parking lot. So that was that decision at that time.
And how many parking spaces did we lose at that time?
We haven't lost any parking spaces um along there at all. It's all going to be repaved. That would have to be patched no matter what.
Okay, but if it wasn't patched, how many parking spaces?
Um, that we really just lose the western drive aisle.
Yeah.
Um, that's actually been closed intermittently for construction access over the last year. So what we we probably, we actually wouldn't lose any parking spaces. It would just limit ingress and egress. You'd only have that eastern entrance if we didn't repave that. We just lose that from parking lot.
But we would not, that's part of that eighty thousand dollar patchwork. So the eighty thousand dollars covers everything that has been torn up on as part of the building, which is everything here and that utility area and some of the utility over there. We've added the utility work over here and that's changed the alignment and we've added um more in here. Yep, the playground trenching, so.
What's the long-term plan for that western side?
Can I talk about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, our current adopted Parks Master Plan calls for an expansion of this parking lot to the west into the southern two or the southern ball field. So that's all we can say right now is that we have an adopted Parks Master Plan with capital improvement plans that envision uh an expansion west of the parking lot and a doubling of the size of the skate park. And to be honest, we're, we're never going to double the size of that skate park if we don't simultaneously expand the parking lot to the west. Cause we would lose probably another half of our existing parking spots by that by doubling the skate park in size again. So that is our current long-run plan for for the south end of Travers Park. Now, if you, if you ask like, what's realistically going to happen in the next two to five years? Probably neither of those things. But as the community, our adopted vision for this park is to realign the softball and baseball fields. Um, there's vision to put like turf in fields. We've been talking to the ball field community. They have a long list of, literally a long list, like about twenty things that need to be done to these ball fields in the next few years to keep them usable. They're almost unusable in some cases. So um there there are, you know, members of our community, you know, park users who are passionate about the long-term solutions in Travers Park. We understand right now, there's a desire to kind of finish up this project and shift towards maintenance of our parks facilities and we're totally ready to do that. But even here in Travers Park, there's maintenance issues in our ball fields in particular that are going to need addressing in the next few years. But the the expansion of the parking lot to the west and the doubling of the skate park, you're looking at a several million, million dollar project to do that. Our Parks Capital Improvement Funds don't really allow for those kinds of investments in the next few years. So, you know, absent any new funding streams, um we're probably just going to pivot to maintaining what we have here. And it's going to function really well at the end of this year when this is all done. We've, we've got probably the minimum number of parking spaces to make this park functional right now. Like there will be tournaments and, you know, times of year when the neighbors complain about spillover on the streets. And, you know, too many people parking on Lincoln or whatever. We hear it every year during tournament time, the, got the next Ponderay Cup coming up here in two weeks. Actually, we'll probably get some of those complaints. Though there is, there is an absolute need to increase the size of this parking lot right now. I don't think we believe that that's a necessity right now. But as our community grows, as demand for parks facilities grows, in the long run, we we need to look at moving this parking lot out to the west to accommodate the the growth and demand for park facilities and.
Jason, keep in mind that uh development impact fees qualify for park expansion facility.
Expanding um parks for the, for the new growth that we see can can be spun into through parks development impact fees as well. So.
Any other que- questions from the council?
Yes. Um, so if I recall, we had kind of dual purposed a lot of these funds for the skate park, for the park playground and for this project. Where does that leave us?
So the uh, the, to be clear, this work won't be done until the next fiscal year. So the um, the repurposing of the previously budgeted funds for, you know, concepts and so on that we've discussed many times, we're not planning to to use that for this asphalt work. Um, that remains in our contingency for the playground at this point. We 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 need to maintain the contingency for the playground. So the the hundred and twenty thousand for this asphalt work is coming out of fiscal year twenty twenty-five Parks Capital Improvement Funds, which has around three hundred thousand dollars in it. So what would we do with that money if we weren't doing the resurfacing of the parking lot? I I explained this in my email to you. We're meeting with our landscape architect tomorrow, actually, Mike, who you've all seen up here several times, Mike Terrell, um to to examine the conditions. We're actually meeting him at the tennis courts tomorrow. Of those two outdoor tennis courts on the south that you can see there. Um, the original scope of that envisioned around a hundred and eighty thousand dollar complete tear out, complete redo of the subsurface down to something like two or three feet below the 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 surface. Um, subgrade, a- as with a lot of our park amenities and city streets all over town, these were built probably not to the highest standard twenty years ago when they were constructed. The amount of filter, it wasn't adequate, the amount of subgrade. Maeve can tell you about all the different le- levels of gravel and so on that would have been needed to do it right. But there's um what we call a bird bath in the middle of that tennis court right now. It's about a two-foot diameter hole in the tennis court. Basically, it's like a little sinkhole that's formed. That's the main problem. There's one uh north to south crack on the east southeastern court that I'd say has a minimal effect on play there. I've been playing there for two weeks as part of the City Doubles League. Um, I don't think those courts need a two hundred thousand dollar overhaul. So our plan is to visit with Mike. He has solutions. He's been communicating with email and email for us to reduce the scope of that from a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars to more like thirty to fifty thousand dollars to to re- patch and resurface all four outdoor courts, but not do a complete tear out and redo of the courts from three feet down up to the surface. Does that make sense? So that, that's what we, you could say that's what we would have done if we weren't doing the asphalt. We we believe the finishing of this parking lot is high priority.
Yes, in addition, may I add something? Um, there is um contingency that is in the interest for the building. So the building has its own. It's not designated as contingency, but when we received the end, the donation at the beginning of the project, it was put into an account and that account has generated interest. That's been what we've been using for interest for the building. So um I spoke to the team today. We don't believe that we're going to have any more change orders on the building side of things unless we combine work with their contractors, which is what we're doing in the case of this parking lot. Um, so the funds for the park stuff, that a hundred and twenty that's coming out of the park side, um, there's actually still some up and down happening. We might realize a credit of eleven thousand dollars on the skate park side because we applied for an Avista grant, which will help offset the costs of the skate park lighting. And then that would allow us to put some of the funds that we uh we previously obligated back in. Um, in addition, I have something called an FFNE list. That's our finishes, furnishings and extras. Um, those are all the items like the benches or the decorations or the bathroom, you know, the toilet people holders and stuff that the owner is going to provide, the city is going to provide, and then the contractor is going to install. I have funds set aside for that that's coming out of this um park fund, if you will. Um, and also stuff like that for the playground. So there's just extra things that we said would be owner-provided on the playground side. Um, I don't know those exact costs yet. So I'm, what I'm doing is value engineering those items out. I'm working with donors. I'm working with Heather Upton on the, some of the arts and the creative side of things to see what we can do to um lower those costs. So I do think that we're probably going to realize less than a hundred and twenty thousand take from the twenty twenty-five budget. But um I just don't have that exact amount. So I'd rather show you the worst and then, you know, tell you the best case scenario in the end. But the good news is, as of today, it sounds like we're, we're on the home stretch on the building. The playground, um, just a quick update on that. It sounds like we did not foresee that the Parks Maintenance Crew, when they dug out the old bathroom building, they didn't get all the foundation material. So there's going to be a little bit of cost for demoing that. Um, they just, I don't know what happened. It was an oversight. It was probably buried and too big for them. So we'll have to remove that. There's going to be a little bit of cost because we didn't originally account for that. So there'd be a little bit of a change order in that. Um, and that's where some of that contingency that Jason's talking about would be used for. Um, but other than that, we did decide to hold on the splash pad and some of the playground equipment. And we're actively fundraising for some of that with the Lions Club and other organizations right now. So um there's still, you know, like I said, things are kind of going up and down a little bit um on that end, but.
Thanks. You finished? I I just, I want to thank you for talking at length through today about this, but still. If, so the three hundred thousand dollars from twenty twenty-five, there are other parks that could use things. Um, to me, taking a hundred and twenty for that, for the pavement. The city beach, we talked about that parking lot, is that in good shape?
No.
No. Um, I'm just saying, I, I just keep seeing money going into this that maybe could wait. I I understand you have to have an ADA path through there. Can that be a pavement on its own, cutting the cost of doing the whole parking lot? Make that ADA accessible to the building so that they could get on the other paths that I don't see yet either. Um, taking eighty thousand from the building itself, I would think this isn't, I can make it a question. Would it be better to use that money, save that for the maintenance of the building that's going to be required? Because we're not sure, are we, that the fees are going to pay for the maintenance? I know you've got this contingency. I just see, I don't know. There's a lot of other things I I think parks in our town could use instead of everything always going to this, if if there are additional grants or um fundings, like you talked about, the development impact fees could be used to offset some of the costs on this. So that three hundred thousand for next year isn't already taken a third of for this pavement. So I guess those are my concerns with this change order.
We were really looking for questions at this point. Well, yes, you did, you did.
I made several questions.
Yep.
And so I'm looking at you with my.
Yes.
Comments.
Thank, well, comments we can talk about once there's a motion in a second, then we can deliberate. Um, do the staff have a a desired response to those questions?
So I heard a question, could we use development impact fees for some of these improvements? Um, our development impact fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-five are already obligated for a parks property acquisition that this council discussed recently. Um, hopefully we hear back on that soon. Um, we certainly have lots of other parks, maintenance and pro- capital projects that we can do. A lot of what you're describing are actually little maintenance projects that we can do out of our maintenance budget, which there's, there's, as I showed you two weeks ago, there's actually like nine or so different funds that help pay for parks around. Sandpoint, the Parks Maintenance Budget, Austin and his crew can go out and take care of small repairs where they come up. Um, something like the City Beach Parking Lot. You know, we have an adopted master plan that shows a vision for how to, you know, accommodate more cars there and move boat trailer parking to other areas. Those are big projects that we just don't have consensus on among council right now or as a community. So in the meantime, we do fill potholes when they come up. I told you about the story two years ago when I saw a boat trailer get its axle ripped off in City Beach Parking Lot. I called Amanda Wilson at the time and literally the next day, they're out there patching that. That was probably a Parks Maintenance Crew that went out and patched that. So we do, you know, patch things up where we can. But, you know, if we were to say, take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that is being spent on the parking lot here and say, let's do a parking lot repair at City Beach, we we'd get a similar amount of new asphalt at City Beach. And there are definitely needs for that, but this is a project we really want to just finish up and be proud of and walk away from. And then, you know, in the years ahead, we'll have development impact fees and Parks Capital Improvement Funds that we can tackle other projects at City Parks with.
I'm, I'm gonna ask Eric to come up because Eric has a parking lot project of comparable size. Eric, would you mind explaining the cost of your parking lot? And this parking lot's comparable and how yours is coming in much higher because you don't have crews already mobilized there and.
Yeah, um, you you realize significant savings by having existing crews, you know, perform additional work as opposed to a new project. Um, for example, uh, we're working on the um downtown parking lot redesign right now. Hopefully we'll be out to bid soon. Um, that project per square foot is significantly more expensive than the cost um that these guys have presented here tonight. And it's exactly for the reason that those contractors are already mobilized uh um in the field. They're already ready to go. They just need to be told yes. And um, you know, we save a significant amount of money doing that. My guess would be if we were to bid this parking lot independently, our costs would be probably thirty to forty percent higher than the costs that are presented here tonight.
My, my question.
Go ahead.
I've just, the, the answer to my question about just paving an ADA accessible route from Pine Street to the building and the functions. Could that be done without paving, repaving the whole parking lot?
No. If you look at the accessible routes from site arrival points as well as internally, you need to provide access of people who are disabled park, say at the skate park, but they want to go over and use the bathroom at the building. You, they need to have a route there and that would be a diagonal, not the direct route off Pine Street. So you need to have internal ADA access per federal regulations.
Aren't you already providing that as part of the requirements for the whole building and the playground? Aren't those our?
So at the building, yes, at the building. So if someone who's disabled were to park at the building, they could get all around the building into the playground. But we now have built a skate park asset on the east side that we've added to. And the main landing area is, if you look at this. Down here, this is where the water fountain is. Let's say that hypothetically, someone who's disabled, they park here and they have to go to the bathroom. Their route to get there would be to go up here. So there needs to be ADA access up here. The route that we're putting in, the main one from Pine Street is right there. When we repave, we would now have access the whole way. So if someone who's disabled in any one of those ADA spots can get around to anything, that's, that's what that law says.
Councilman Spiro.
Yeah, um, a couple of things. One, uh, leave the potholes at City Beach because the teenagers go way too fast down there after hours. Uh, so create more, please. Just kidding. Um, I think it's no secret that this project has um produced a lot of controversy differences and I completely respect and understand that. And it hasn't gone the way as we wanted perfectly. But I think it's important to note that it is what it is where we are here and the costs savings that we're going to have, having them onsite, I think is very important to note that this is going to be, whether you like it or not, a central hub for skaters, tennis players, uh, pickleball, all these different sports. Um, I think it'd be important for the city to get it done as quick as we can so that it can return to this vibrant place of enjoyment and get it out of the way. It's not that there's not other parks that need TLC, our whole city needs TLC. Um, yeah, we're growing fast. Post COVID, uh, prices are going up thanks to the federal government pushing the print button, but I think we have to get this done. Um, and that's my opinion, but I do sympathize and understand the frustrations.
Council, Councilman Spiro, just to be fair to all the council members, is there a question in that? Um, we can deliberate.
Right, absolutely right. I apologize.
Oh, no, you're fine.
No question.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Hearing on any members of the public wish to comment on the sign of?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Beth Wise.
Hello, Ms. Wise, can you hear us?
She's right here.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Hi, my name is Beth Wise. I'm an occupational therapist over at the hospital and I work with people with disabilities of all types in our community. And it's completely unreasonable to expect someone with any kind of disability, not just a wheelchair user, but people who are slower at walking, have decreased endurance, for them to use one path to get around and take a hundred or a thousand extra steps to get to the bathroom that they're not going to make it to when they're trying to watch their grandson or a family member at the skate park. Um, it's it's completely ridiculous to think that that is acceptable. Um, we're a community here. Accessible design is universal design. It is good for everyone, including strollers, skateboards, scooters, cars, people in wheelchairs. Um, we tell people at the hospital, we're trying to find places for people to go and walk and to be healthy, and Traverse Park is one place we So if you keep that pavement that's there, that's already a tremendous trip hazard, we can't tell them to safely go there. Make this park right, make it good. Take advantage of the savings and make it right for everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak on this matter.
What? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Sixth Amendment and change order number six to the GCMGC agreement with Gino Construction Company for the Travis Park Renovation Phase One City Agreement eight twenty-three fifty-three zero zero dash five.
Bill moved.
That's welcome. Moved by rule, second by uh, Dick. So be a roll call vote. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate what I said. I think it's good moving forward. I understand the frustrations, disagreements, completely respect that, but I'd like to see this project done and.
But there's also places that aren't AD accessible now too.
You're a hundred percent right. Um, but this is one of the major ones as we just heard.
I mean, I don't want to take that access away, but there's a lot, just seems a lot of places.
I I think it's important to note that it's not just the act, it's not just the ADA, it's also what we can possibly lose by not doing this with the funding. But you're absolutely right. There's a lot of places that need some TLC and.
We'll keep working on them.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Roll.
I would just concur with um, Councilman Espiro that um, uh, and from the presentation, reiterate that this parking lot is twenty-seven years old. I don't know, maybe City Beach is fifty years old, but they all need to be replaced. But since this is a place where a member of the public has come up and informed us that if we redo this parking lot and there's so many amenities, including the walking path that goes around this park for people with disabilities and the own new section of the skate park, that's an all wheels type of thing. Um, the cost savings in and of itself makes sense to me to do this parking lot before we do a small chunk of City Beach Parking Lot, so. And thank you for your hard work to make that happen. Right. And when I was really proposing to work on City Beach, I was just comparing the.
Any other council um, discussion? Not, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spro?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Good job. Um, we're about to head into our public hearing. I know there's some public members who would like to comment uh, for the fiscal year budget, but let's take a uh, five minute recess. It is uh, seven forty-five. We're convening at seven fifty-four. Um, moving on to uh, proceeding with the public hearing, we'll begin with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget, and I will now use the floor finance director Sarah Lins. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening, council and mayor. Um, tonight we are um, at the final um, a budget meeting for the budget hearing and the final adoption of the budget. Um, we initially set the initial preliminary budget ceiling of five fifty million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand and fifty-four dollars on July, at the July seventeenth meeting. And at that meeting, we also did an in-depth presentation of the CIP one-year plan um, that was presented by staff. And then also we had a follow-up budget workshop at the August seventh meeting where we went into the departments and divisions operating budgets in detail. Tonight, I um, want to go through the rest of the budget of of any and ask to or answer any other questions when we do the budget hearing. We um, per the Idaho code, we have to publish this in the paper that has been done. That was a um, attached in your packet. Also attached in your packet is the annual appropriation ordinance and also a resolution certifying the amount of foregone. And then last but not least, the L two worksheet um, that also will be submitted to the county on September, by September fifth. But going back to the budget book, um, we did the capital one-year plan is the one that's over here on the very right. And then also the one we went over last uh, meeting was the department and divisions um, budgets. And um, I wanted to point out a few different um, items in here. The org chart um, is the um, current one that has been revised and um, with city departments. You can find that in here. Um, also a strategic plan that was adopted back in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, that is also in here. And I wanted to remind everyone that that is what guided our budget process um, is the strategic plan. So everything that you see in here, especially CIP projects um, is guided and um, it all um, ties back to the strategic plan. Financial policies, I won't go through these in depth, but these um, habit were created um, back in in two thousand seventeen before Shiana Seith retired. And then we have updated them um, several times through since then. But they guide our reserve policies. We have several of them. Um, we have emergency reserves, operating reserve uh, reserves. Also, we have um, fund balances, reserve policies within the enterprise funds, uh, one-use reserve policies, a medical reserve policy. Uh, that was all. And then we have the last but not least, the Sarah-funded um, construction reserve that will be on the books until this project is completely um, done, and it will be released at that time and spent per the reserve policy on one-time projects of capital projects. All right, that is the reserve policies. Oh, sorry, the fi- financial policies, including reserve policies. Um, I wanted to point out to uh, the basis of budgeting and um, our structure. We are, um, we have, I'm gonna go down here to the Department of Divisions. Sorry, it keeps bouncing back up. I need to use two fingers. All right, we have um, governmental um, accounting is different than um, than non-governmental accounting, as in we have, we are fund-based counting. This is a great snapshot for um, governmental funds, proprietary funds, which are going to be our enterprise, what we call enterprise funds, mostly our brand-like businesses, water, sewer, garbage funds, and then our fiduciary funds or agency funds, um, our LIDs um, and whatnot. We're going to, um, I'm going to do a high-level fund um, we um, look, and then uh, after that, then it opened up for the public hearing or any questions in public hearing. There also isn't here a glossary of any terms and um, terms that through used throughout the budget process. We did look at this last time, but I'll quickly look over or quickly go over the budget uh, process overview. Um, it's, we start this back in um, right after, actually, we get done with the financial statements, we start the budget process within a, usually a week after. Um, it is um, usually late February, early March is when we actually start the um, training and the gathering of data of operational budgets, CIP budgets. Um, there's different processes with um, in the city of where um, supervisors and managers submit their budgets, they're reviewed and then analyzed by department heads. Um, and then they are submitted and then reviewed by um, finance and the mayor at that point, then they are sub, or then they're presented and, or I should say, all compiled and then some um, initially um, um, presented to you in the um, first budget um, um, meeting that we have. And we are now all the way down here at the the budget public hearing. Just wanted to point out that if anybody at any time wants to we're at the process, you can always go here and see um, where we're at. And it is a lengthy process of half of a year, so it's not a, just put together on the whim. One other one that I wanted to um, also point out is the personnel changes. Uh, we didn't go through this in depth before, but this has been updated for our um, new department structure. Um, so and also the prior years' numbers have all been also updated to reflect where they were at or they would have been at in these different departments. Down below over here, we do have um, the reduction of employees, the sixteen Segal and Westside firefighters, um, three point five full-time, um, a city administrator, asset manager, and a point five administrative assistant. And the grant and contract procurement manager was rolled up into and merged with the central services director position. Um, we have two additions to this budget for uh, personnel, and that is um, one, a wastewater operator for pre-treatment um, functions, and then also the sports facility um, supervisor for the James Russell Sports Center. And then you can also see here the structure of the grade chart and this, and where they, everyone lands at. All right, and then we're going to skip into the fund summaries. Then any questions before I move on or any comments? Should ask first. Okay. All right. I wanted to show this because this is a great, um, when you scroll down, you can kind of see um, the uh, comprehensive summary of all the different revenue sources that are coming in. This is not by fund, this is just overall and expenditures here too. So this is just a high snapshot of the whole entire city, what it's spending across the different um, areas uh, and how they're collecting money. Then we get down to the revenues by fund. This is where you can see the majority of our fund um, is the majority of it is general fund, wastewater fund and water fund is the majority of all of of what our um, of of our pro, our our um, operations are here at the city. Um, and then our revenues by sources at a high level. Um, we went into these last times. I'm not going to go into detail, but our taxes and franchise fees um, is obviously our very large one. And then charges for services, wastewater and um, water is our large charges for services in these ones. Um, let's see, and then revenue department by department. You can, this is just a high level again by um, by each department. You can see the general revenue. This is, I did want to explain here. So each department um, generates, or I shouldn't say each, some departments generate uh, revenue and some don't. For example, finance, we don't, we don't um, generate any revenue um, per se. So but we do, in the Public Works Department, they do generate revenue with the water and wastewater. Um, police um, department does generate revenue with their fines and their parking um, parking um, tickets. And then um, and and I'm just, not, these are not all of them, but then also um, community development planning has planning fees and um, building building um, permits and whatnot that come through there. So that's kind of how this, and then general revenue isn't really generated by any department per se. There can be taxes coming, this is going to be inter-funds um, coming in or inter-fund um, 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 things coming from the state that are just allotted to us. So that's just classified as general revenue. All right. So this is as um, and all of them. And then when we were just going over in the budget um, overview, the different types of funds, we got the governmental funds, the proprietary and the fiduciary funds. The fiduciary fund, I'm not going to click in this, but this is a local improvement districts. We only have one right now. Um, and this is uh, has been around for, oh, I think fifteen, ten, fifteen years, but this is where um, you can go out and actually get a local improvement district. We basically, the gist of it is that we fund the um, the project and then we just build back the um, tax um, residents of the taxpayers, um, their proportion, proportion amount over the life of the loan and collect that. So we're basically being a bank for the project. We haven't entered into one of those and a new one of those since I've been here in an over eight years. Um, proprietary funds are, as I like to think of them as like a business that ran like a business, they um, they um, are our garbage fund, our water fund and our wastewater fund and our debt service fund. Um, our debt service fund is any bond, their bonds that are out there for um, a right now, we only have one bond that's out there for the water fund. Um, we don't have any wastewater fund bonds, but that's where they all are housed at um, and paid out of. The other three, I think, are pretty self-explanatory as to what they do. And then um, I wanted to talk last about the um, the governmental funds because they are a little bit more complicated. Um, in the uh, the different funding mechanisms, I'm going to click on the park improvement fund. So at the top here, you can see um, what what they are, the purpose of the fund, what it um, does, and then if there is any um, ordinances that created it, you can also see this that point back to when it was created by council. This one was created back in eighty-seven. And it basically, for um, simplicity, is taking all of the revenues that the parks generate and is dumping it into this fund, and it's used for capital improvements. The expenses of the parks still is in the general fund. And then you can, when you scroll down, then you can see, and I like this one only because for the most part, a lot of funds are um, relatively stable. They're not changing a whole lot because we just have the same things going on. This one is different because we had the large donation back in twenty-two for the Russell Center. Um, so you can see the large revenue here of what came in. And then you can see um, the next year, we didn't have nearly as much because of the large donation that we can see here. Um, the budgets are very large in this year, expecting the build-out of that Russell um, building. And it now has gone back down for the current next or next fiscal year, twenty-five, because we will be done with that project. But then you can look in here and you can actually see the um, similar to what we saw in the other one is like what's, what all the details are in here. You see, again, to that contribution donation, the seven point five million. All right, um, let me go back over here to this. We have also the recreation fund um, that does fund um, our recreation programs. And also now it will, now at this one, you do see a large increase in here. So I wanted to point that out. That is now the James Russell Building. Um, because that is a recreation activity, that is now the operational costs are now in this fund versus the building was actually in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. So now you'll see it switch over here um, next year. The operations of the building, not, not the, the, still the, the um, the remaining cost to finish the building are still over in Park Improvement Fund. The the capital project impact fee fund, that is the study that you heard about tonight. Um, that is going to um, change those, um, or I should say, update those fees to whatever they are, but you can see the latest um, capital improvement fund um, study, fee study here. And then again, down below, you can kind of just see the details of 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 what's been spent and what the revenue is in there. And the fiber network um, fund, that one is pretty, um, I would say right now is kind of stagnant. It is, we haven't been building out a lot the last couple of years. When I first, about eight years ago, it was a heavily utilized fund because we're still, we were still building out quite a bit of stuff. We will be doing an assessment of that this next year. So there is um, a large decrease. We had anticipated in the current year to receive a large grant to do the um, downtown build-out. Um, we reset and want to get um, for this next fiscal year. And we're going to be doing an assessment of the fiber, um, I get what we have in the fiber across the whole city. Um, and then once we reassess that and get that um, study back in, then we can um, then go out for grants to figure out where we want to build that or build that out in the future.
We and, we anticipate that uh, study or the mapping uh, to come through the Department of Commerce, there's a broadband grant that will help fund that um, identification of our network and map it.
Yep. And then, so all of those four funds equal what we call special revenue funds. Um, those are part of the governmental funds. So I wanted, and I kind of have these separated outs here, so you can see. Um, those are part of the governmental funds, so I wanted and I kind of have these separated outs here, so you can see that they are different though than the general fund. And I left the general fund for last, it is kind of the everything else um that doesn't fit into all the other ones, our police, our fire, our um parks maintenance building. Um, this lists out everything that's in here, it's just that pretty much everything else that supports um all the everything else. Or all the other um like our administrative that supports everything else. And this is um a lot of these expensive, I don't think we've talked a whole lot about this, but some of the expenses in here do get allocated back out to the water sewer garbage funds as inter fund transfers, so you will see that as a large line item in the budget as inter fund transfers going out. And in, and that is for services provided by this fund to the other funds. And that is for um funds, that's pretty much the high level um of those. You can also look in our annual audit, it does go through um in more det, I wouldn't say in more detail, in different types of detail. Um, the um what those funds, how they are analyzed and um it's not real fun reading if you're not an accountant person, but um it does have more detail.
Is it fun reading if you're an accountant person?
Eh, I won't admit it, but maybe. Um, all right, and then funding sources, we did go through this um the first meeting that we had, so I'm not gonna go unless you guys have any um other deep or any other questions. Um, I am, I guess, done with this part of the presentation, so if you guys.
Council members have any question for Sarah at this time?
Are we gonna talk about specific items or areas of the budget after the public hearing or?
Um, I'm just looking at the order real quickly. So following any questions you have, we'll have our public hearing, and then there'll be an opportunity for um um a motion, um, and then second, and then discussion.
So if we have questions about a specific item in the budget, is Sarah responsible for answering all those, or does that departments or?
I think Sarah can handle most of it, uh, between Sarah and myself and the departments, probably answered questions.
Okay, so I wanted to understand and get more detail on the water department capital projects budget. And um that would be listed as, gosh, it's so teeny. Three, four, seven, two, three, zero, zero, seven, Little Sand Creek Watershed Management Plan and Urban Forestry Master Plan Project. Can you give me detail on what we are doing?
I will open up that page, but I will not be the one to speak on that. I would say unless you want to, I would assume that we'd want to pull.
Yeah, I think we can defer to Jason, is it two hundred thousand?
Hundred fifty is what the budget item says.
Yeah, that was um, you may recall council president rule that um this summer, we were talking about the um the cost savings and the mobilization of working on some of the uh forest management and trail access and related uh forest access up there. Um, I think it was Councilman Schreiber who mentioned that there was um uh, we were using spending all the money or a lot of the money, so there's a seemed like an interest to increase that budget. Um, so it's been increased and Jason, you can kind of discuss the high level of that, and I can get into the weeds of people.
Um, so we are wrapping up our twenty twenty four logging project in the watershed, I think Mo Dunko logging has been out there for the better part of the last year. And um when you look at our watershed forest management plan, which is on our website. And and you look at the different zones proposed for logging, that management plan was done in twenty nineteen. The zone that we're logging this year was intended to be logged in twenty twenty. And there are about two zones that were intended to be logged between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four, which we haven't gotten to. So the uh, one of the primary purposes, in addition to preserving the water quality of owning almost four thousand acres in the watershed, is to manage that timber resource effectively. So the uh funds from past logging operations are going to this fund, and that those are intended to be reinvested in the maintenance of water quality and timber management in the watershed. So about a month ago, um, most of my staff has left, but uh our urban forester Eric Bush and Maeve and myself met with inland forest management down at their offices to look at the timber management plan and say, you know, that we're four years, five years behind, what's happening to the health of the forest and other parts that we we haven't been logging, that we intended to log between now, between then and now, from the time the plan was adopted five years ago. And we looked at that plan and said, okay, what what does the next five years look like? So putting this money in the budget now allows us to, if not, if we decide to pursue timber management practices in the next year. And again, keep in mind, this is actually ultimately this this whole effort will be under the auspices of the public works director who we don't have on staff right now. So I've I've just been kind of handed watershed management since I've been on staff. This should be a public works director project. This was an effort of our previous pub um utilities director Greg Lanning in his absence. For some reason, this has kind of fallen on my plate, so we've we've been in conversations with I F M and Land Force Management, Mike Walcott and his team on, you know, what what projects could we be doing in the next few years? And what kind of funds might be needed for that, they are, they have, and they're actually in the scope of work um for the management of this year's logging effort, we've added an assessment and a kind of an appraisal up in the watershed that they're gonna do over the next couple of months, I believe, Cheryl can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've added to their scope of work just a few thousand dollars for them to go out on the ground and assess some of the road conditions higher up in the watershed in the zones where like phase two and three and four of our future logging plans were envisioned. And look at those existing roads, figure out what um improvements we could be making now to make those roads accessible for future logging operations. So I encourage you to just look at our urban, our our um little waters, little sand creek watershed forest management plan on our website, and there's a map on there that shows in different colored shaded areas where and when different logging operations were set to take place. And it was, it was kind of eye opening to me to realize that we're about five or six years behind with that plan envisioned. So in those areas that were envisioned for logging last year and this year, we we expect to find, well, I would expect to find through their survey of those areas. You know, conditions that are in need of addressing. You've got dense undergrowth, makes the forest more prone to wildfires. You've got ill-maintained infrastructure, makes the the watershed more prone to erosion and to sedimentation. You've got failed culverts, you've got roads that haven't been touched in thirty years since those areas were logged last. So that two hundred thousand dollars is really just to work with I F M, our forest managerial management company to identify areas of infrastructure that we could be investing in this year, next year to allow for future access for logging operations, or perhaps even embark on a new logging operation, so we can kind of catch up with that backlog that exists from us only having done now two logging operations in the last six or seven years, I think, actually, I think it was twenty nineteen and twenty twenty four. But we're supposed to be logging every two years in there to keep that forest healthy and to keep the revenue coming into that fund. So the mayor asked us to put some money in the budget this year to to examine where where are the infrastructure deficiencies, what are the threats to our forest? How can we be investing in in forest health in future access to, you know, that resource for logging for uh water?
Yeah, I think, and also to to be um transparent as well, with the lens that this, th- there's there's a duality of of this work, right? Um, for instance, uh, a logging road that could access a stand to be harvested in three years um could be um also um, you know, maintained, improved for that access, but also provide access for winter uh recreation, people walking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing. So uh I think, you know, my intent is to look at this watershed management through the lens of where are there overlapping opportunities to provide our stewardship towards the forest, meet our obligations of management of the watershed, but also look at it creatively um for access for the public, because it's a tremendous resource that um, you know, our 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 master plans call for, uh, looking at opportunities for access.
And so I have looked at the maps and I've read the timber management plan, and in the timber management plan and after speaking with the timber management managers that um it's important to log, but it's also the way our plan is written, it's important to have rest years. And we just logged this past year, so um it's recommended within our plan that we don't log every single year because we allow the watershed to rest and recover from that. So I was surprised to see this amount go in there if we're doing an assessment of some sort. Um, I think that that's very reasonable, but I think we're walking um a really fine line from tipping in using water fund money to provide a recreational opportunity. Um, I don't think it was maybe the best choice to have this um particular um job um given to our um community planning director when he has parks and rec underneath him, it might not be um.
We're gonna defer to our experts inland forestry man.
Correct, okay.
Again, with the lens of.
With the lens of, I've talked to some of the experts who've done this timber plan, and they're saying that rest is also important. Um, I'm, I understand um having a second use, but I hope that we're really looking at this through um changing the erosion and protecting our water and doing all those other things and not having our priority of getting a recreation trail um sort of veiled in using our water funds. So I think legally, um, it's important that we're extremely careful with this piece of the budget. And I'll just state outright that I'm I'm not comfortable in using those funds, because I understand I I don't agree that um you can use them in that way, and um I would like to see a more detailed presentation from inland forestry management in front of council before um if this budget is approved and this amount is approved by the council members, that they come before the council and speak to exactly what, how, when, where and why. And um I'm hoping that that's um made clear.
Councilwoman Rule, um, our forest work and our watershed work will be directed by those experts, and you will hear their plan. And staff and myself will be talking to them about the plan, and uh that will be brought forward, um, and you'll see that this year.
And is there a plan to rest the watershed as written in our timber management plan?
I'm I'm gonna defer to uh the experts on this. Uh, what I'm saying very clearly, though, is if there is a stand or an area that has um future harvest potential or need for work.
That would be zone four you're referring to?
Maybe, um, what I'm saying is that if there's uh two competing elements that have uh equal validity for uh timber management and one is at a grade and an access point that might allow someone to pull off um or access the watershed on snowshoes or cross-country skis. Uh, I'm gonna be, you know, leaning towards the latter there. So when I say, when I mean, we're gonna be looking at this through the lens of sort of a multi-use management of this watershed. Um, that's gonna be where um if there's a competing projects that are equivalent, I'm going to favor and propose and promote the one that provides for the opportunity for public access while meeting the responsibilities um and and the legal limitations of these these expenditures of these dollars.
As long as we're very clear with legal limitations, I do not want the city to get into problematic territory.
I appreciate that uh concern. Any other questions for um Sarah, myself or departments regarding uh the budget? Before we open the public hearing? We will now prepare to proceed with our public hearing, I'll just remind everyone regarding the city's rules of stability and meeting decorum, which we went over at the top of the meeting. If you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and to the chief or other staff in the back of the room, those attending remotely who wish to testify on the budget, may raise their hands on Zoom at this time. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing, I'll allow that option this evening. If you wish to gift your time to someone else, you may do so. The person gifting their time may do so only once, and the person receiving gifted time may only receive one gift for a total of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state so when you begin speaking and indicate the name of the person who gifted you the time, otherwise each speaker will have up to three minutes. The option of gifting times is available only to those attending in person. The public hearing is now open, Madam Cork, has anyone signed up to speak on the budget or the city's use of forgone living authority?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Wesley Desmond? Donna Griffin?
Hi, Donna, thanks for entertaining us tonight and stick sticking with us here.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, we were here um two weeks ago and able to present some great information for you all. And this is more just to fill in some of those gaps and possibly some of those questions to help clarify with some actually directly budget-related issues really quick. Um, you have a lot on the, oh, you have a table, so we won't go into it. Um, basically, this community, amazing community resource, we had several people attend the hearing to see if they could just voice their um big their support for the system. And so unfortunately, I had to leave, many could not make it tonight with other obligations, just wanted to make sure, I know that they've submitted some letters, I was told, and even an envelope was presented last time. Just making sure that while you get that information from the people who were here and took that effort to write those letters would be my first concern. Um, and then just a couple, past that presentation, there were a couple of things that I just wanted to point out, we had a um request letter that we put in, I mean, this is relating to the procedure piece of it. Um, I think that um, Mergram, you received a copy of that letter that I wrote, May twenty eighth, and I just want to make sure that everybody understood, we actually started corresponding March twenty eighth. I have the emails, I have them, I have the copies of them right now. Um, we were assured that um we were getting in on that early budget process, so I just wanted to make sure that we were doing uh that diligence to make sure we were um present, asking for guidance March twenty eighth and again on April third. And we were told that things were going to be rolling, we would be contacted as to our further actions. So then we wrote that letter, May twenty eighth, so just put that in a little bit of perspective. Um, and um we will be here in February if we can participate in the comment for, because that was brought up next time or last time to make sure that we were part of that. Um, also, to please consider the um ridership percentages that we provided last time. The um, I say that just because counselors asked some very pointed questions about that service areas and particularly Schweitzer and even our mileage going out to the Red Barn. Um, and that none of that funding was being used to support that, and in turn also Boundary County coming south on Thursdays, none of the funding from Boundary County is being used to support that. But also in turn, um, it was also pointed out um from others that keep in mind that Pondure contributed their full amount, the ninety five thousand this past year, and their ridership is like thirty percent of this, and so when we're going forward and considering some of these funding pieces, um, it was asked if that would be considered as well. Um, those percentages to make sure that those were allocated. The next point really quick is that let's see here. They demonstrated success to the system, it's all you, the addition, all of our partners working together.
Feel free to take another minute or so, um, you are a joint powers authority that we support greatly, so.
Oh, yeah, I was, I'm sorry, I was trying to hurry this along, um, I appreciate that very much. And basically, um, it was kind of neat yesterday to open an envelope from a Banner County resident or Boundary County resident who donated five thousand dollars.
Wow.
We had another hundred dollar donation from a person who was, who is, they'll write a check for us a hundred, you know, dollars. Pisner volunteers, they're providing as much local match through their in-kind donations of helping us clean buses and shelters to the tune of fifty two hundred dollars a year. So the point is, we've got a lot of community efforts that are going into this, and it's really astounding what's going on. And the appreciation for everybody pitching in this amazing community resource to make it all happen is pretty neat, it's a great effort. The the one who makes the ninety, the hundred dollar donation, she's ninety seven years old. So it's kind of, she just really appreciates the system. Basically, any considerations um for the transportation projects and any of your grant funding projects, there's so many projects going on, right? If you guys can include transportation components, pieces that hook some of these pieces together, that helps us all out as well, and we can help um with the
Absolutely.
with the, as all of you have support letters for us and our projects, we can in turn provide those support letters. Um, those collaboration efforts go a long way and help us all for those funding purposes, and again, those, um, while you're there in the piece of having a really amazing project, providing that transportation component that we can all help with and work with, works out really well for us. For everybody, I think, so um that's about it, we have the opportunity to share between now and any conversations and any questions you all have, please contact me, I like to come and talk about SpotBuses, it's a really great, amazing community effort. So just those considerations, please, and thank you.
Donna, I just had one quick question from from your last presentation, I understood that you had uh some ARPA money to get you through this year. Donna, I just had one quick question from, from your last presentation. I understood that you had some ARPA money to get you through this year. But that, that was going to be depleted. Is, did I understand that correctly?
We do have CARES money to get us, Mr. Mayor, CARES money to get us through. The, it's, if people start pulling back though, on those percentages and say, then we start jockeying with those funds a little bit. So all those considerations brought together at our board meetings as well as a real effort.
Well, I, I just want to say on my behalf that I will be getting much more involved in Spots. It's near and dear to my heart. I was there at its birth. And going to start with looking at the appointed board member and look forward to supporting you as much as we can. It's incredibly valued, valuable service to our community.
Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that very much. And if I can come and give even presentations or updates to anything, that would be amazing. And then any of your assistance in any of those meetings, we meet monthly, third Thursday of the month at 11 o'clock at the Spot Office on Zoom or our finance committee meets the day before that as well. So all of that support and all that interaction, that transparency is absolutely amazing and a really great start to making sure that we can fund this into the future with all these additional projects we have going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised and I have no one else signed up to speak on the budget.
With all those wishing to speak having been heard, the public hearing is now closed. Council will now deliberate and may ask questions of staff. Did I miss a page? I may have six. No. I hear no questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Legal clarification here. So if we wanted to change funding this evening, would the protocol be that we would make a motion to change that funding and then direct staff to make the cuts and come back? I don't know if, I'm sorry if that's a legal cut or a legal question or.
A deadline. We have to have a public hearing and have it done tonight. It's legally.
But didn't you adopt, you still adopt the total budget this evening? And if we all agreed on a budget or a funding change, we still agree to adopt the budget, but cuts come back. You guys, you guys come back to us with what those cuts would be and how you would make that work. Does that make sense?
I think the challenge, Councilman Dick, is that staff would know, have no idea what to cut. So I think there is an avenue if you want to go down that road, but it would take place right here, right now.
Okay. In terms of what we would cut, I guess I, I'm still, I guess I'd like a little more clarification on the ordinance that Chief Kuhn was talking about earlier with the dogs in the city and us getting that in October where we're at, the RFP. I guess I have some questions. If we send out for RFP, are we going to get anybody else besides the BTAA that would come back with the RFP? Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Right. And, and then I guess a second follow-up question on that with Idaho procurement law. Is, we're going out to RFP because it's over $5,000. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Of it.
Our policy, city policy.
That's a city policy. That's a council policy, right? So council could actually waive that policy.
No.
No.
There's, you'd have to adopt the policy.
You'd have to. Say that again?
To amend your policy.
So we could amend the policy this evening now?
It would have to be agendized.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So then I guess going back to about the ordinance, tell me, tell me about the ordinance, I guess in detail that would come back to us in October.
So the goal would be is to bring an ordinance back, basically repealing the current license ordinance for the city of Sandpoint. So if we repeal the license ordinance, then what it does is it gives us the freedom as the police department, as a city to adopt what we want to do when it comes to sheltering dogs. For example, we would set up our own protocols and said, here's our five criterias, in danger, aggressive, whatever those would be. And it, but it basically gives us the ability to, to shelter those dogs. So what, if you were, the way they're when you read the license agreement to the state, and I don't have it in front of me, but basically it says, if the city's adopted a license ordinance for canines, then the city has some liability to, to house them, take care of them, maintain them, pick them up. And that's kind of what we've been functioning under. The concern right now is this, the, the county and Ponderay City have both done away with some of their licensing requirements. And their argument's going to be, is that they don't have to participate in those agreements with anybody and they're looking for other avenues too. The concern that we have from the, the city's perspective is if we maintain a license that has that, then we're going to be on the hook for it. We recently seen two, three weeks ago, a dog that was adopted, wasn't adopted, it was taken in by a family friend because the other owner couldn't handle it, taken to the shelter, dropped off. And then that person said it was a, it was a found dog, stray dog in the city of Sandpoint, which would have been on our hook. So we're seeing a lot of dogs being dropped off and basically associated with the city of Sandpoint. So by doing the license agreement, they puts the ownership back on the police department to make those determinations on what we want to pick up and what, what we don't want to pick, pick up, which is hopefully going to decrease those, some of those drop offs that put that liability and that responsibility back on us.
And I would add, Chief, once, once we have that responsibility, we know that our responsibility as a service provider is our police department to pick up stray dogs. I think the chief and I have talked about what avenues are there to return that dog to its owner. So right now, they do try, but because of the contract, the generous contract on the behalf of Better Together, we just drop them off and they do it. But under a future scenario, if the chief or a resource officer picked up a dog, maybe the first step would be trying to rehome that dog right then and there. Looking at the tag, getting a free scanner, seeing if there's a chip. So we have avenues to, you know, more efficiently respond to dogs that are needing to be picked up, legitimate dogs picked up by the police. But it also would separate us from, I'll say at Good Samaritan, who sees a dog walking down Creekside Avenue and grabs it and thinks it's lost and goes and takes it to the shelter and says, oh, it's a Sandpoint dog. So the police department will be the entity making the decision of which dogs are picked up and taken in.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if, if I could interject, just to speak to the language of the ordinance specifically. So Idaho Code 25, 2804 provides that the sheriff of the county must impound stray dogs. And at this point, I'm paraphrasing, paraphrasing. Unless a municipal city has, and I'm reading it here, has enacted a dog licensing law and is enforcing, and is enforcing it. So if we repeal the dog licensing ordinance, then the city no longer has the obligation to impound stray dogs. And so what's happening is a citizen will see someone, will see a dog on the street, take it to the animal shelter, and then the city's on the hook for paying for that. And that's kind of the situation that we're trying to avoid without having the city. That way the city can have a discretion in whether, whether or not the dog gets impounded. And so by repealing the, the licensing ordinance and finding other ways to other areas in the ordinance, such as the vaccine ordinance, and other areas in the dog ordinance to allow for discretion in when the police choose to impound the dog, it, it, it makes it, it puts it back in the police's hands rather than just makes it an obligation, a statutory obligation.
And I would add, with that authority and clear path, we can then go potentially issue a citation to the owner with the dog that we deem to be at large or in need for impoundment. Whereas right now, there's been conversation that by providing that owner information at Better Together Animal Alliance to the police, there may be a disincentive for someone to pick up a dog because they're going to get a fine. So we can recover our costs for this. So overall, it seems like there's a very humane, not euthanasia, tactical, efficient path for us to proceed down how we handle these animals. And some of that may be shifting the obligation and the burden to Banner County. Effectively a unfunded state mandate unless there's a tool for us to recover the costs through a infraction or misdemeanor for a stray dog, which currently we're not getting that information and we have no mechanism to go charge somebody who's had their fourth or fifth dog at large.
I have a question now because I'm confused. Did somebody say that Banner County was trying to also not have to license dogs? Did you say Ponderay and Banner County?
That's going to be their argument, but if you, the way that we read the statute is the responsibility falls back on the sheriff's department.
The sheriff's department. So if people don't have to license their dogs, would you be able to find out whose they are?
And really that's that, we talked about that free program. So the goal would be is to, to get into like a potentially a free program. And that, as I sat back and was whispering with Mandy, she just got a grant. She's got a ton of tags that are coming in. She was excited about hearing a free licensing program. It's something that they would be participating into potentially where they could not only license those dogs when they're getting adopted. We could have those licenses with us. Our officers could do it in the field. We wouldn't care if they were a city dog or a county dog, because we would just put them all into one system without a fee being associated with this. So the hope would be is that we get a better compliance rate for a free license and be able to get those dogs back more efficiently than what we're doing.
In our current licensing program, it's probably no surprise. I don't, how many licenses do we have? Do you know of?
You know, I don't, I don't know, but we're not.
It's not many. It's not a hot seller.
A thousand dollars a year.
Not a hot seller at City Hall.
No, and, and it's not, it's, that part of that code was talking about enforcement. I think we, we issued last year four citations for dogs at law, for dogs not being licensed. So it's not something that we heavily enforce to start with.
Some of us in this room may not have licensed dogs.
Thank you.
Oh, you've got any other council questions? And I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho termed the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-1003, appropriating $50,499,054 to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Sandpoint, Idaho for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purpose for which said appropriation is made, providing for severability, publication, and an effective date.
I'd entertain a motion that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only.
The move.
Second.
Moved by Spiro, second by Howard. This will, any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only. I'd entertain a motion that the rule is requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended at the ordinance pass its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
I can.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Ducat. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Motion passes. The ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. It will become effective following publication in the newspaper. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the resolution certifying the amount of forgone increase to be included in fiscal year 2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Congratulations, City Council. Good job. Thanks staff for all your hard work. Next, we'll proceed with a public hearing on the new fees and existing fees proposed to increase more than 5%. I will again yield the floor to Sarah Lynn's Finance Director.
All right. Good evening again. Onto the next item is the public hearing for the city fees and adoption of fees. Again, this was presented initially at the July 17th council meeting with all the changes and the, over the 5% and the new ones, new fees were all published in the paper. And then we did have a change to a few of the fees that were presented at the next, at our next meeting on August 7th. And then tonight in, I will pull it up. This is a comprehensive list. And it is, with those additional changes to the fees are also in here. One thing I would like to point out is that there was one question that Councilwoman Rule had on the special events permit, the city electrical usage did not have a comment next to it of what that usage was. So we added that comment per day. And with the parentheses of unless otherwise specified by the permit or agreement. There are a few agreements that we have, special events that are a usage that are actually calculated off of the actual bills that the, the electrical bills. So that was added in here because it wasn't clarified in the. But otherwise it is all the same and I don't have anything to add unless you have any more questions. And it was, again, Jason did a, had, had a good comprehensive presentation that he had for the James Russell Building Facility fees.
Do council members have any question at this time? We will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. The rules and procedures recited earlier are still in effect. And your sign up forms for staff at the back of the room and those attending remotely may raise your hand on zoom at this time if you wish to testify on city fees. Oh, the public hearing is now open. Sorry. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up to speak and I don't see any hands raised. I don't believe anyone wishes to speak on this topic.
Does anyone else wish to speak who hasn't had the opportunity? With all those who wish to speak having been heard, the public hearing is now closed. Council will now deliberate and may ask questions of staff. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution adopting new city fees and approving changes to the existing fees and the fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rule, second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, council members, public and staff. See you next year on that. For the final item on the agenda, I'd like to continue our discussion on the proposal for a new local option tax to fund street and sidewalk construction. We have, is Holly still here? Thank you, Holly. I have a presentation and Holly has background on our streets that was in the packet and can go over that and answer any questions that you might have. I, I'll go first here just because mine are fairly short. Can you advance to the next slide? So first and foremost, Council President Rule had some questions. I got some questions from other council members over the last two weeks and just want to respond to those. Some of them were questions, some of them were comments. Again, tonight we've heard a lot about needs, funding wants, and we have the reality that we have a limited capacity to respond to those. So the reason this is being brought forward is because the local option tax is a special provision provided by, provided to resort communities, which we are one. And it seems like this is really the only path forward to address some of the needs and wants. So I'll go through just a couple of slides trying to explain my rationale and more clarity and detail. First, there was a comment, new development, including 55th, 56th Bridge Street Hotel should be contributing, not should be, but should be contributing to new revenue to help city, fund city streets. So new development pays development impact fees. And as you heard tonight, those can only be utilized for system expansion. The primary focus of this local option tax is not expansion, it is maintenance and repair of our existing streets. So when we look at our city budget, in addition to the, we have a 3% cap increase to the general fund property tax per year. That generates us as a city about $146,000 of new money. We also can assess at just 90% of the value, new construction into the financing to add to our new revenue. That, that new construction this year amounts to about $60,000. The lodging tax that we have in place, the 14%, the seven additional expires in 2025, 35. So I say if the new hotel is constructed and if 180 rooms are sold at $303 a night and if occupancy is 50% annually, occupancy from this new development would amount to an additional $1.3 million per year in lodging tax through 2035 when it sunsets. If, again, the hotel is operational by 2028, we would potentially secure seven years of lodging tax amounting to about $9.7 million. I say all those ifs because as you're all very aware. I say all those ifs because as you're all very aware, economies changes, finding financing changes, projects change, priorities change. And don't count your chickens until they hatch, so to speak. Next slide.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Rule?
Um, where did the number fifty percent annual occupancy come from?
That is halfway between zero and a hundred. So it's just.
Pretty condescending, Mayor, and inappropriate.
I'm sorry, I'm a little did not mean that to be.
Late, but.
So that's just the number I put in there. I'm not an expert on hotel occupancy and what they expect to be.
You are not an expert on that.
On hotel occupancy, no. So I figured fifty percent. You can do the math. It's a it's a ballpark.
Can do the math.
It's a ballpark, one of these. Next slide, please. So comment two, in twenty twenty nine, when Sura sunsets, that revenue should be contributing to help the city fund street repairs. New council members, urban renewal does sunset in twenty twenty nine. At that point, the city will receive eighty percent of the value of new construction with the urban renewal increase. This will amount to an estimated six hundred thousand dollars of new uncommitted general fund revenue to the city starting in twenty thirty. Next slide, please. Comment three, including sidewalks is viewed as a subsidy to developers. So presently, anyone who does home improvements that exceed twenty five percent of the value of the home triggers sidewalk improvements. This is potentially a barrier for existing homeowners to make needed improvements if they have to add the cost of sidewalks onto their home improvements. Secondarily, we can qualify that sidewalks could be limited to existing lots. Newly created lots could be required to construct sidewalks. So I don't see it and we have provisions and the ability to make sure we're not subsidizing subdividers and developers if we include sidewalks in the plan. Next slide, please. This feels rushed. Why the urgency? Have we thought this through and discussed it? So it doesn't seem overly complex to me. Roads are falling apart. We have no funding to arrest the intimate decay of the roads. This is the simplest solution that spreads the cost to visitors in the community, not just the residents and businesses. Further, Ponderay is running its local option tax renewal this fall. A parallel ballot measure equalizes the communities. We won't get people buying groceries in one town or the other favoring one or the other because both would be subject to the tax. The presidential election this November has the highest voter turnout of all elections. This is an ideal time to gauge the broadest voter sentiment on the issue. And at worst, if we fail to gain sixty percent support, we can survey residents to understand what else they would like to add or why they failed to support the measure. Excellent. Uh, question number one, is twenty five years too long to impose the sales tax? With the chart and figures Holly will go over in just a moment, the cost and the revenue projections to either maintain or bring our streets up to standard suggests that this is the needed duration to meet the funding needs of option two with sidewalks in town. So twenty five years within forecasted tax collection, you know, would would give us the funding to meet our our known needs. If roads are able to be brought up to the established standard prior to this, we can always remove the tax. And finally, other Idaho communities have approached the local option tax this way. I think this is a pretty important point. There's no guarantee that the legislation next year won't change, potentially eliminating the local option tax provision, restricting it, changing the population threshold thresholds. So my perspective is strike while the iron is hot and the opportunity to present this tax to the voter is legal and approved by the state.
Mayor, real quick, that's clear. Is twenty five years would be how long this tax would be imposed for?
That's what I'm suggesting that we go out and ask the voters for their perspective on that. Um, next slide. Uh, question two, should other elements be included pathways, parks, art or spot? So as Councilman Spiro pointed out, if approved and there was a dedicated street funding source, the council could free up approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year of general fund dollars to be allocated to other funding priorities such as public art, parks, or maybe even spot. Keep in mind that after our cost of living adjustment, the step increases for employees benefits insurance. The hundred and forty six thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight dollars of new general fund property taxes that we get each year fall short of our cost. This means that each year a greater and greater share of the general fund property tax goes to employees and associated benefits. And as such, we fall behind further each year, resulting in a compelling need for new revenue to maintain existing levels of service. So our new revenue just doesn't meet the needs. Once you throw in all these costs, it's a problem with the three percent cap. Uh, next slide. Uh, what are the cons? Well, the biggest con is I guess the voters may reject the ballot measure. Uh, my my personal perspective is let's ask them. Every single person I've talked to, not heard one person object to uh, the the concept of funding, street repairs and maintenance through a local option tax that falls significantly on tourists and visitors. The sales tax is regressive is another com. It it does impact lower income households disproportionately. We could see retail leakage down to Quarterlane if we have a one percent sales tax. And new roads may result in increased speeding and the potential for more severe pedestrian auto accidents. Next slide. What are the other options? Council could initiate a local improvement district, forcing and financing the cost of street improvements to adjacent property owners, as you heard a little bit about tonight. It's typically very unpopular. We could grind grade roll and magnesium chloride are poor and very poor streets, which there are numerous ones. Many small towns have gravel roads. We could do nothing and continue to use the Dura Patch, resulting in the baseline pavement conditions that increase the backlog each year. And we could lobby the state or the feds for an increase in dedicated local street funding. Excellent. So my thoughts, the sales tax collection, June through September, based on our previous imposition of this tax. During those months, that resulted in forty percent of annual collections. July alone represents a ninety percent increase of sales tax collections over the mud season low April, so eighty versus a hundred and fifty thousand. So this really aligns with the peak visitor seasons and as such, consider just you might want to consider just applying the local option tax to these months, maybe at two percent. That was a recommendation from a very intelligent person I met with last week who said only give him credit if it works. But yeah, that was really an interesting thought. We could we could structure this in a way that it's just those high peak tourist months and that way we could really make sure that it targets residents and visitors would be paying um, a significant percentage of our road repair and maintenance. So I'm seeking council approval at our next meeting, September fourth, to place language on the ballot this November as follows. Next slide. And what you have here is the pretty much boilerplate language. I've highlighted the the numbers that I'd like us to discuss and consider. After you hear from Holly, you know, what percentage? Through what duration? I put in here the months of June, July, August and September because I really like that idea. I think it's really targets visitors and tourists and helps them pay for our, you know, almost fifty percent of our roads. And then finally, the percentage of the tax, A through D here, talk about the priorities that I think are kind of meat and potatoes, bare bones. I sympathetic to art and spot and other needs we have. But I also am fearful that to some voters, those seem like wants and not needs. So my preference is that we cut to the bone and just focus specifically on our streets and our sidewalks. And and I, you know, if it if it doesn't pass, if it fails, I think it's a great opportunity to learn and survey our community and understand what else they wanted to see, what else they, you know, what they didn't like. But in general, I'm not I'm not afraid to to ask the voters if this is something that they want. So with that, I'd like if you oblige Holly just to walk through sort of the 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 details and the thinking and a little education on the roads and then enter, open it up to your comments, questions and implied consent or direction.
Okay, I'll share my screen. Just to go over the staff report. So the purpose of my presentation is to just go over our pavement condition as it is today. Uh, so in twenty nineteen, the city engaged infrastructure management services IMS to produce a condition assessment survey of every street in Sandpoint. That condition assessment scored all of our streets between zero and a hundred. So the pictures in front of you show the different street conditions. Excellent condition is eighty five to a hundred. So Schweitzer Cut Off now would be an example of excellent condition. And then on the low end, very poor, zero to twenty five is in the bottom right hand corner and above that is poor condition. An example of poor condition would be Lake Street. So if you just walked outside, Lake Street is in poor condition. So one thing that the assessment found was that our backlog of streets, our backlog, our streets and conditions of very poor to poor condition, so zero to forty. That is double the national average. So our backlog of twenty percent is double what nationally we see. So on our street projects historically, the way that we've approached them is we've balanced maintenance versus repairing failed streets. So our condition assessment recommends what projects should we work on? And they're always maintenance projects because that's most cost, I'm sorry. Most cost effective. However, if we only did maintenance projects, we wouldn't work on our backlog. The other portion of our streets projects is these projects go to design efforts, stormwater improvements, ADA requirements. So when we have a street project, we're sharing those costs across other pots. So if we have a million dollar paving project, the streets don't actually see a million dollars. So this image here is from our condition assessment. If we put a million dollars into our street, the that is a projection over ten years of what the condition would look like. Um, in red is kind of our target. We do not meet this. So currently our funding does not provide for a million dollars a year to put into streets. So we're actually below that red line in reality of what our street condition is able to what what our funding is able to do to our streets is below that red line. So you can see our condition is not improving. And it's it's actually worsening over time. It's we're falling somewhere between the black line of do nothing and the steady state in red. So I took the road rehab assessment and I just projected it into twenty four dollars. So this assessment was in twenty nineteen. Um, inflated those costs to twenty four dollars and I've got two options on this screen. So on the left hand side is to rehab all the streets, not reconstruct, but rehab. So to provide a surface improvement on all the streets. And the second option would be what the cost would be to rehab the streets to national standard. So that would get our backlog from twenty percent down to twelve fifteen percent. Um, so those are the two options. And then above and below, there are additional options with or without sidewalk. So on the top rows just show prices of street rehab, eighty minimal ADA improvements, minimal stormwater improvements. And then the bottom are the sidewalk costs if we were to improve sidewalk and build sidewalk with these street rehab projects. So with those numbers. There is a big table in your packet and I tried to make it a little more palatable on this slide, but there are different funding scenarios. So if on the first block there on the top, there's the lot funding. If we had two million dollars of lot funding and resort city lodging tax and five hundred general fund. Um, it projects out to twenty twenty or twenty forty five, different scenarios of option one. Um, which is the rehab all or option two rehab all to national standard where we'd land. So two hundred or two million dollars a year with the lot funding plus fifty thousand lodging tax, which we have until twenty thirty five. Plus five hundred thousand general fund, we could rehab all the streets by twenty thirty nine. Oh, sorry, we could rehab all the streets by twenty forty five. We could rehab to national standards by twenty thirty nine. So that's how that table worked. And then at the bottom of that table, the other scenario that I tried to highlight was if we took the general fund out of the equation, so we had two million dollars, local option tax, five hundred thousand resort city tax through twenty thirty five. And no general funding. All of the streets would not be rehabbed by twenty forty five, but we could rehab to national standard by twenty forty three. And that's with using the entirety of the local option tax for.
And and under that slide that Holly just presented, that's where with the deduction of the general fund, we have at least a pathway and an avenue to both address our other needs and this continual spiral that I mentioned that with increasing benefits, wages, insurance. We we continue to erode our our general fund. So that that top row showing no general fund, if we had a dedicated street revenue source. It would give the city and y'all a lot more options and flexibility to address the needs that we hear about.
May I ask you a question now?
Is that your last slide, Holly?
That's my last slide. I guess the the biggest takeaway that I just wanted to highlight was you know, our our goal again is if we could fix all streets, that blue line is obviously the objective to have all the streets repaired. But just to highlight again, we're we're not currently meeting our steady state and maintaining our backlog. Our backlog is regressing. And as we work on backlog streets, last year we did Ruth Avenue was a backlog street that we repaired. It meant that we didn't use that money to maintain our streets in good condition. So it's always a balance of if we're just maintaining our streets, we're ignoring our backlog. If we address our backlog streets, we're not addressing maintenance. We're unable to do both right now.
It's it's a it's a structural problem and I I didn't mean to be snarky, but there's you know, grinding and paving is, I mean, where do we put our seven hundred and fifty two million dollars a year? Is it in the maintenance or is in the backlog and these are, this is the option that I'd love to float to the voters. Obviously, it's going to take a lot of in the next eleven weeks, a lot of publicity, education. I would intend to go out and speak to Rotary, to service clubs. Anywhere, everywhere, talk to realtors. We can't advocate for a local option tax, but we can present facts. There are probably entities out there that would advocate for it. So with that, I just want to open up to council to to feel you out and try to answer any questions you have because I would like to bring this back to you next week as an action item with your implied consent or direction. And if it fails, then that's on a vote, that's fine, but I I feel very passionately about this.
So.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Were those numbers with just that high peak months, those figures on that?
No, what Holly presented was a annual.
So if it was one cent all year?
Correct.
Okay. Did you do the ones with the high peak?
Yeah, if we if we based, so here's here's the unknown aspect of this. We have numbers from our last year that we had the local option tax in. That tax that year generated one point four five million at one percent for the year. I spoke with a grocery store manager. I think I mentioned this. He said their their sales have doubled since that tax was in place. Like thirty million a year they're doing. Just mind boggling. So these numbers are unknown until the tax is actually in place. So we're basically just forecasting and looking at projections. But if we had it at two percent and the numbers were the same. Um, we would generate just for those four months, we'd generate about the same amount. Let's do it.
Anyway, a certain population could be exempt or get a refund or anything that population were worried about expending more money on.
You know, the there the the provisions are very flexible, like you can exempt very specific items and things. I guess my my thought process about running concurrently with Ponderay going is that wherever someone's going to be shopping for groceries, they're gonna they're gonna pay this. I shop at Walmart frequently for groceries, paying it there. I shop at Yolks or Super One or, you know, Safeway, be paying it there. So the thought in my mind is that it's equivalent in both communities. the thought in my mind is that it's equivalent in both communities. Um, I guess if we went with the seasonal tax, um, you know, it it might be a little less burdensome for our residents. Um, but the big one is that we'd really be uh targeting tourists and visitors.
Right, I get that. It it would be more for them those four months, though those five months would be.
We'd walk by in May.
Yeah, or uh.
That's what I'm thinking. You'd have to plan.
Yeah.
Ahead to not. Okay, yeah, those were my questions. And one more about the speed limits from roads.
Yeah.
Causing cars to go faster. How do you lower speed limits? Can you lower speed limits?
Well, we we can establish speed limits in the city. Um, typically it's based on design, but we're already hearing that. I think you might have heard it from the Durapatcher. I've gotten a couple emails saying love the Durapatcher, will you now lower the speed limits? Um, I'm gonna have to defer to Chief for Holly. I know.
You do a traffic study. So you do an engineer traffic study and they recommend a a speed limit.
So if we had better roads and we're worried about people going faster, is there a way in town? I guess is what I'm asking. Can we as a city lower like twenty miles in the city?
Yeah, there's a couple ways to do it. As Holly mentioned, the other way is through design. Um, I know Sixth Avenue is somewhat controversial, but the people who live on Sixth Avenue will freaking love it. Um, it's got narrowing, uh you use chicanes and
Okay.
Uh, other things we could look at, you know, tabletops and other things, but uh we'd probably have to do that most effectively through design and that prevents the enforcement burden too.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Along those same lines, um, yeah, studies have shown that design, street design is the biggest indicator, not what the sign says, not how many police are out, but if you properly design the street. And Holly and I were having a conversation recently about lane widths and that our standard right now is twelve feet, whereas um a lot of studies are showing that ten foot lanes um provide those traffic calming benefits. The other benefit that may not be as widely talked about is that you're using twenty percent less asphalt and uh collecting twenty percent less stormwater.
Heat islands.
Yeah, twenty percent less heat island. So in terms of the costs of rebuilding every single road in our town, we think about the massive uh undertaking that that is, if we focus on minimizing our lane widths just by two feet from twelve feet down to ten feet, that's twenty percent less cost of all of these.
And if we're doing sidewalks, could they ex- expand to take up that space? Because you can't redesign all our roads, right?
Well, uh, our new roads is if we were reconstructing them, uh, we could certainly.
But like, okay, so let's say Lake Street, it needs repaving to make it ten feet. And I don't even know how big it is. Is it?
Probably, it's probably thirty two.
But, okay.
So ten twelve foot lanes plus parking on both sides.
Oh, parking. I'm just thinking of bike lanes.
Yeah.
Multi-use paths.
Yeah, I would love to see some of that extra.
Yeah, a lot of that can be done with paint, striping, other things.
Not trying to be rude here, but it's pretty late. I don't know if we can stick to the specific.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm excited for that in the future as well. It'd be great.
Um, I guess what I'm I'm looking for here is um some counsel, uh just direction on duration percentage. Do you like the the short four month tourist season? And um to the language to include uh sidewalks for existing development, basically trying to take that burden off um our residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
In terms of duration, can you tell us, I I mean, the, did you say Ponderay is coming to the end of their lot now? I'm gonna go back out for a new one. What was the duration of their prior?
Um, I believe it was five years.
And do you have any indication of what they're gonna go for in November?
I do not know. Um, I can find that out for you.
Would it make sense that i- if Sandpoint did it and Ponderay did it, that the durations should in fact be the same?
It it does make sense, Councilman Howard. The the one thing that we face that Ponderay doesn't is uh in five years, we will likely be over ten thousand people and we'll never have that opportunity again.
Twenty thirty, is that?
Unless the statute changes, um uh because we lose our resort city uh population.
But you can do if this five years hit twenty twenty nine or twenty?
Uh, this would go into effect January twenty twenty five. So it would come off uh December thirtieth to uh thirty first twenty twenty nine. So we'd have a day effectively, uh but.
But, okay.
We could uh possibly look at renewing it that fall.
And is is that part of your rationale and thought of proposing the twenty five year is knowing that 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 resort status could go away, will probably go away?
Yeah, I'll tell you that uh Association of Idaho Cities, there's there's discussion every year about populations. Uh, some some people don't feel like cities should have this option. Others want to expand it. Uh, it's it's a uh it's a dynamic situation. So uh I I got this idea from uh the city of Haley. They they said let's lock it in. And they went out, uh I believe it was twenty five years. So um and then it just provides security certainty. We have a a known funding source that'll be variable, of course, with ebbs and flows of the economy, but um it positions us in a in a way that we can budget and uh address some of these um these needs that we have, wants, wants and needs, but definitely.
And I I'll just make this comment. Um, I I appreciate your attention to this. Everybody that I talk to in the city, this is a top priority, right? Nobody is pleased with the status of our roads. And so the fact that you're bringing potential optionality solutions to go address it, I thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for me, I I completely agree. And and what I love about this is um that the people choose. You know, it's a it's a majority, sixty percent. I think that's great, especially in the environment we live in. We appreciate representation that way. Um, I think I've been a part of two of these and um number one thing I'd say is education, right? This is gonna be a lot of misunderstandings about this, but I also do appreciate the seasonal aspect of it. You know, I think we all know that life is hard with inflation. Um, I know with four kids going out to the grocery store, it's very expensive. So everybody's burdened by this, but I think those particular months are important with all the the guests coming in and paying their fair share of, so it doesn't just go on. It's gonna come out of our pocket. So why not them as well? I think that's a a good idea. And in those three months, you know, if I really want to, I can go to Ponderay when there's this.
One percent.
You know, sunset, I can go over there if I really want to, but um I think it's great for the people to decide. And I I'm in favor of the duration of twenty five years and we can always scale back if we need to.
And do you have a thought on the one or two percent?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman.
Um, I'm not sure that you answered my question with your presentation. Um, I also asked about um what other city services um will suffer and become unsatisfactory? And are we just focusing on one single thing that the city needs? Um, and um, one of the things that I've heard after sitting here for many years is um um our housing issues. Um, and I know there are other resort cities that put an effort and incentives to get true. Um, I'm not even gonna use any of the phrasing, but um as we do have, um well, we do have true low income housing behind Super One Grocery Store. From what I understand, that's mandated and it's through federal. And um, so I'm just wondering if you've thought this whole process through, yep, the roads, it's a great idea. Um, it's a great way to fund things, but are we gonna feel like in five or ten years, when the economy picks up again and our teachers are being pushed out and we can't find a utilities director, probably because she couldn't find housing there that she could afford with her salary? Um, I want us to be thinking of the bigger picture of all the issues that the city has and not just one issue and um incentivizing for some of those things. So we don't turn into a city in twenty five years that has great roads for a lot of remote um employees and a lot of wealthy retirees and all the rest of the people who live here now. You know, live in asshole or commuting and don't get to enjoy, you know, the roads we can now drive fast on.
Super, super critical point.
Uh, with with all due respect to Councilwoman President Rule, um, I definitely would not support a local option tax that would go towards housing. That is not the government's job is to control housing in that way. I just.
I think you misunderstood what I was saying. So there are federal programs, what it is, where it is true, there low income housing. There's, and I'm not talking about subsidizing something that's affordable housing or any of that stuff. I'm talking about a federal standard that already exists out there.
So how would the local option ta- how would that affect the local option taxes?
Well, in order to get that type of housing, a lot of times you have to incentivize developers because the bottom line doesn't pencil out. And I'm not an expert in that area. And I'm not saying that's what we should do with a lot tax. I was just putting it out there as something else. We're looking at roads. It's a great idea for roads, but what other city services are gonna suffer? We have a twenty seven year old parking lot at Traverse. We have axles getting ripped off at City Beach.
Right.
And maybe this frees up some money, but does it free up enough money for us to manage the other parts of the city? What I'm trying to ask the mayor, and I don't feel like he thoroughly answered it, is what about all the other services? It's kind of like only feeding one of your children.
Right. No, I I um, what I was attempting to do is I think the the best way we could address those very valid and important concerns, I feel it every day, we try to hire someone. I I know what it's like to not have employee housing or housing that's attainable for uh great, great wages. Um, so that five hundred thousand dollars in general fund that we'd free up, we could do a lot of things like that. I mean, that's um, you know, that's twelve and a half million dollars conservatively over the next twenty five years. So um, one of the things we can do uh legally is um impact fees for the housing that you deem is appropriate. Um, we can waive impact fees. We just have to backfill that with revenue. So um that would come from the general fund or through other revenue sources. So we can provide incentives, we can legally waive fees, we can waive impact fees. We just can't waive them and not have them pay them, because the impact fee program is built on expansion and the growth happens and you have to expand.
And so I guess in addition to adding to that, as we heard, I believe at our last meeting, and I don't want to make this go any longer. But the other thing that I heard from staff is we have two snowplows that are gonna cost a half a million dollars, and that's gonna absorb that five hundred thousand dollars just in in those two years, if you're saying that gets freed up from doing this. So is that then again enough for each and every department to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our residents? So I just want us I'm not saying I'm against roads, I'm for roads. I think it's a great plan. I appreciate all, I couldn't even read that on my computer. I couldn't even blow it up and up. I was, I was trying. But I could see it tonight on the numbers. But we need to look at everything and make sure that we don't make a misstep that we are gonna regret further.
Yeah, I I understand and I hear you loudly, uh Councilwoman Rule. And I guess what I'd say at this point is it it gives us a uh five hundred thousand dollar general fund cushion to start addressing those issues. And I know we can all think creatively about how to address them in the absence of this, that five hundred thousands going into roads that will continue to degrade. Um, leaving us in a worse situation.
Yeah, I think we understand all that. Um, the 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 last comment would just be the pathways piece because you were looking for opinion on this.
Yeah.
And I don't, I know that we did a road assessment, but I don't know that we did a pathway assessment. And as I'm riding more of the pathways, and I would like us to consider um including the pathways that are within our park system. Because I feel like then that would free up more of those general funds for the park systems to do other projects like fixing the ball fields that are gonna become inaccessible. So if we can include all pathways, whether or not they're in our park system or not, I think that that could help free up money from the Parks and Rec budget.
Okay. Um, do you have a thought on duration or the seasonal aspect of that?
I would have to process that and see more numbers about how exactly that pans out.
Okay. Uh, question for legal. Um, when we bring this, when I bring this in two weeks, um, I presume it's um, it's an action and it's not a hearing. So we have some flexibility to tweak that during discussion. Um, duration percentage.
Ballot language has specific goals. Melissa, do you know off the top of your head? And then ballot language, yeah.
Yeah, it it does. Mr. Mayor, um, and it's the draft that's been uh presented is formatted in that language that we've used and has been successful in the past. Um, because it's a resolution, um, it's my understanding that you certainly could make changes on the fly during the meeting.
Great.
To make amendments to what's been presented as a draft.
That's that's what I think, because the ballot's gonna be the ultimate public hearing. Um, good, that that gives me some some.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you maybe more direct feedback of what I'm thinking. I like the twenty five year duration as well. I think it gives us a lot of flexibility. Um, in terms of should it be one percent, two percent, should it be just for the summer season? I think it really depends on how the numbers pencil out and in your table, you were showing two million dollars a year. And so which one of those options or which combinations of options would give us that two million, I think is what I'd be looking for.
Um, would you be willing to spend an hour with me? I know you work on present cost of money and future projections and inflation, just so we could work on a a a more refined uh projection of what collections might do.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my other comment would be kind of relative to that if um um, the language is no longer up here. That came off the screen. Um, but um would be potentially a limit. I know you set a limit and then there would be a refund to the public.
Yeah.
But as we parse through this and look at the bigger picture of all the departments, is there another need that any additional after that two million, depending on the fluctuation of the collection per year, could then be shifted to another area just as a fallback mechanism for us? So we might be able to accomplish some other projects also.
Yeah, I could probably answer that.
Thank you.
Uh, Idaho Code provides that the ordinance has to, and the local option tax has to specifically outline the services that where the taxes are gonna be used.
Right. And I remember that kind of when we did the lot for the stadium. So um I know it would have to be far more detailed and could get more confusing to the public, but I'd still like maybe the mayor to spend some time thinking about if there's not a simplistic way or there's one certain area that you feel is secondary to um your desire to have the roads that would be
Yeah, it's.
An intelligent choice to put.
I hear you there. And what I'm really trying to balance is I don't want to lose the people who might be like, nope, I'm I'm a simple meat and potatoes, basic infrastructure kind of mindset and say, if you add all these other things. So that's where I'm thinking the general fund savings. Five hundred thousand a year is gonna be our our tool to try to fund and address those things. But uh I will give that some consideration, try to present you some options.
My concern is just as you said earlier yourself, that those inflationary increases within staffing could eat that up pretty rapidly. And then we're in the same place, we're only being able to fund one department. So um, I would like you to come back with maybe an option of where you feel like we need to funnel some other money and if we can do it in a simple matter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's the key, right, is less is more. I think in these particular option taxes, where it's not overwhelming to the voter, where it is simple, because already there's gonna be confusion. Every single time, there's confusion. And it's understandable. I mean, we do this all the time. Not everybody does. So I think less is more, but if we can do that, one legally, two simply, then I think that's, I think that's great. My concern is the 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 overwhelming nature of a ballot. I mean, we really don't like the word taxes. I I certainly don't. So it it can be overwhelming. So I I agree with you, Council President, and I also agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
And in one one way it could play out if it failed, um, we do a survey and we hear back from people saying, no, I wanted it. I would have supported it if it had included parks or something else. Um, so uh, yeah, I will work on that and um try to figure out a way to um give us a an avenue for other other over collections or things like that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I would go for a one percent option tax and do it year round. Um, I think in the next two and a half years, when the hotel is built with the amount of conference room space, I think we're gonna see a severe decrease of our shoulder seasons. Uh, if they Uh, if they can actually book out the conferences that are being cherry picked away from us from Port LA and north of us as well. Duration, uh, I think with great education on where we're at, uh, I think you could get the twenty five years.
Thank you, that's a, that's a great point.
Was bummed to not see the spot bus in there and I hope as a body and staffer next year, we do fund at their ask.
That's my bad, I um, I want to get us on the board of that and uh really understand what's going on, but. To your point, um, the one percent, that's that's a good point, that that shoulder season will uh go away, so. Um, Councilman Trevor, you've been quiet.
Yeah, um, you know, I think that we're all kind of on the same page, that we understand that we need this money. Um, to me, it's just a matter of what the voters will actually approve, and so, well, I think. The Council President makes some really good points about not pigeonholing ourselves, I think that we're really in danger of. Um, not getting it approved if we make it too complex, but also if we just. Put in things that people have a reaction to, like we've seen, like housing, obviously, people have a reaction to. And I think that's a real danger that if we put it in there, we're not gonna get passed at the ballot and then we get nothing.
That wasn't my suggestion, I I wasn't saying add it to this, I was simply.
What's the thinking, right, yeah.
I was using that as an example of something else, I was not saying add it to the language here.
No, but anything, I think even Parks and Rec could be uh enough to not get the vote cast. And in fact, I've heard feedback from the one that didn't pass that was for roads and sidewalks and Parks and Rec. And people said, well, I trust him for roads and sidewalks, but not Parks and Rec, so, you know, I agree with Councilor Howard that. Um, I hear a lot of feedback from the public about roads and sidewalks, and I think that people would vote for that. So uh, it's not a matter of whether we need the money, we know we need the money, it's a matter of what are the voters willing to approve? And I think that um, keeping it simple and keeping it uh tangible is what's gonna get passed. Um, in terms of the percentage and the months, I mean, I was. Definitely on board with the summer, but Counselor Dick made a really good point, um, so I'm more flexible on that. I'm not set on one or the other. For the percentage, it's just a matter of, you know, will will the voters pass two percent or are we shooting too high?
Yep.
Just for those months, those four months.
Mister Mayor, uh, an additional comment, um, I know you said to keep it simple, but. Um, it's connectivity, it's transportation, it's all those things, so weaving the spot bus into this. Because it is the nature of what this essence is.
Yeah.
Potentially could be a way for the expansion, um, more of that. Network where you're connecting to the ski mountain year round kind of stuff and um.
Yeah, no.
That's, I mean, and that's not, would not be a big percentage. Of it, anyway, it's just another thought, but I think that could be simply integrated. As opposed to other things, but again, it just speaks to that point where I said, you know, are we only thinking about?
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, I think it it's all about the messaging, though. Yeah, Mister Mayor, it will not pass if the spot bus is on it.
Yeah.
Not that I'm against the spot bus, I'm just letting you.
I, and uh, you know, I think I've gotten enough feedback, um, thank you so much, I I we, it may be something we have to take. Two bites at the apple, four or three, but um, I appreciate your feedback and uh have enough to go on. Uh, with no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at nine thirty two.